Good evening and welcome to this regular meeting of the Loveland Board of Education for the purpose of having a work session. I would call the meeting to order at 6:02 PM and I would ask our Treasurer, Mr. Hawley, for a roll call.
Mr. Doherty?
Present.
Dr. Lorenz?
Here.
Ms. Pettit?
Here.
Dr. Swetchnow?
Here.
Mrs. Washburn?
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. And the first item on the agenda will be a motion to approve the agenda. It is the agenda as available on Board Docs. I think I saw Mr. Doherty's hand raised to move that. Is there a second? And I see Mrs. Washburn. So it has been moved in second to adopt the agenda. Any questions or discussion? Mr. Hawley, can we vote on that?
Dr. Lorenz?
Yes.
Ms. Pettit?
Yes.
Dr. Swetchnow?
Yes.
Mrs. Washburn?
Yes.
Mr. Doherty?
Yes.
Motion carried. I would ask you all, except for Dr. Swetchnow, who I believe is still making his way to his final location for the meeting, but the rest of you, I would ask you to rise and listen as Ms. Pettit and the Grand Order Charlie Joe lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where rich it stands and one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Well done.
Great job to Charlie Joe. That was a great job.
Was that a first grade pledge?
Was that a first grade pledge?
That'd be like a first grader me.
Senator, thank you. It's a really important thing, I think, for us to remember with all of the events that are going on in our country right now that we're all together pledging allegiance and that we're trying our best to be undivided. So thanks Charlie Joe for reminding us of that. I will just make note that Dr. Swetchnow is on his way home, so he is joining us on one device. At another point, he will be switching to one. Just so those of you who are listening to the meeting understand what's happening, but he is present remotely. All board members are present remotely. And this is a work session of the board, so it is the board members working together. And so the only folks we have with us this evening are our Superintendent, Dr. Kraus, and our Treasurer, Mr. Hawley. And then Mr. Knapp is with us to help us get through the technological aspects of the meeting. Hopefully, we won't have any Tower of Babel moments the way we did in last Thursday's meeting, so we're hoping that that will all work correctly. And I believe the first thing on our agenda is a discussion of or review of the district vision and of the portrait of a tiger. And I believe, Dr. Kraus, you'll help us remind us where we are and then we can discuss where we are in that vision statement.
So we can talk about pre-pandemic and post-pandemic, from where we were in the normal operations of the board and the district. So, and I should have looked at the date, but I believe at the last business meeting in February, we brought forward to you the commitments, the 2021 commitments, that's the one attachment. We had talked about moving away from expectations as a board into commitments, so that we together as a board and as an administrative team would commit to these things and that each individual building improvement plan would be based on these. So you all finalized those and we moved forward and we rolled out the goal setting tablets to our building principals. And then, you know, we changed course significantly in making it more remote and significantly have changed course in reopening for next year. It doesn't change our commitment to academics and commitment to the work that we're doing with students, but it certainly has changed the focus of our planning and professional development has been very much carried on a little bit. So the Portrait of a Tiger work was developed two years ago with the input of our parents, our community, our students to really come up with what is it that we want students to know and be able to do, big ideas when they leave this pre-K-12, when they leave and graduate as a tiger. Portrait of a Graduate is an Ohio Department of Education initiative where they encourage and support districts in developing portraits. This is something that we did on our own without that consultancy, but it's based on the national work around developing the Portrait of a Tiger. So our commitments are developed from that. So I thought for a couple of reasons, it would be a good idea to take a few minutes and have this board reestablish around these ideas with it as a new collective of five, talk through those, talk through what that means as a board as we continue to board and I mean our principals in that work within the building. Fair enough introduction, Dr. Lorenz?
That sounds great. If I could get myself unmuted, that would be even faster. So I think perhaps the way to start is to remind everyone that I think the one piece that doesn't need a lot of discussion in the 2021 commitments is the one that we worked on quite a bit, which was that every tiger will benefit from fiscal stewardship. That to me is the one that is the most direct board-influenced piece of the commitment. The other commitments are board-adopted, but those are all commitments that we have placed on the shoulders of teachers and principals and administrators and even bus drivers, even our great bus drivers, who were recognized on national TV yesterday. They are all making these commitments to our tigers. So I don't know how the board wants to start discussing. I don't know if our newer members have questions that they'd like to ask or if you simply want to dive into a particular commitment and get started. And I did see Mr. Doherty raise his hand, so I'll let him start.
Thank you, Kathy. Just as always, a comment about the thoughtful work that has gone into this. I think it's expansive and deep in its intended impact, so I'm very supportive of what's here. I did have a question about whether we should, in the vision/commitments document, be more specific with respect to metrics and specific targets. You know, for example, the one that you were talking about, Kathy, fiscal stewardship. We say, ensure the majority of funding is invested in classroom instruction. Well, should we specify that 80% or some number, et cetera, and upon academic excellence? Been trying to understand the state report card on the district. And again, similarly, wonder if we should be specific about our intentions or aspirations from a metrics perspective.
Good question. Board member responses?
I'm not opposed to adding that at all. I just don't want it to become too cumbersome because it's supposed to be a one-page snapshot, correct?
That would have been perhaps my thought as well, that the one very graphic kind of document serves one purpose. And there may be, and Dr. Kraus may be able to answer this, when we talk about building goals and how they lead up to district goals, where we have the goals that play into this statement may be where we have the metrics. But that's a very good point.
It is where you would see the metrics for the academic excellence, student engagement, and social emotional health. The fiscal stewardship, certainly that's a new commitment that we added, and the community engagement collaboration. Though there will be metrics in the goals around communication and collaboration from the building and engagement standpoint, but if there's other additional metrics or board metrics that they'd like to discuss, we can certainly have that. Normally, in June, the principals would be getting together at their retreat to finalize these goals, present back to you with those metrics in them. You know, the building leadership teams have been pretty busy trying to run remote learning. So the pacing, which we normally would present these back to the board, is off.
So it's just my experience that it's helpful to keep goals regularly in front of the organization so everybody gets it, everybody's constantly reminded of it, et cetera. I don't know where those would appear. And that would be my interest in this, that if they have been articulated, where does everybody, and particularly the community, in addition to administration, et cetera, where do they see those? And how are we displaying our progress against them?
I'm just thinking out loud, and this is not suggesting that we must do that this way, but for example, on the fiscal stewardship goal, the board did pass a resolution stating the rate of growth, maintaining a lower rate of growth. So that was an actual board resolution. And I would think that the board would also, as we will work through what steps we want to take as far as communication is concerned, that we would probably also pass resolutions. So that's one place that they appear. But I'm wondering if, in the interest of keeping a sort of a clean look to the commitments, maybe if we don't also want to create a general goal statement that looks like this, but has some of the metrics there, so that there's maybe a third document. So as not to, when you put too much information on one screenshot, then it makes it very hard to catch it all. So I'm absolutely thinking metrics are great and maybe we have a metrics, but we call it how we measure our goals or measuring the goals or meeting the goals, something like that, and put our metrics there. And I think that would be work of the board to do. In other words, not asking the administration, not asking the buildings to funnel all their goals and metrics in, but that the board look at the goals that are feeding into those particular elements and do its own work to create this metrics document.
I'm way good with that. And I'll just add the last point, that from a district and board accountability perspective, that we add our performance against those metrics on a monthly basis, whatever seems to be appropriate.
Okay. What is the feeling of the board of when this metrics or measurable progress document should or could be created for 2021? I would assume that we need to wait for some of the building metrics and maybe it is published at the beginning of the school year with the information of when it would be updated. Is that something that everybody's kind of thinking? I see one thumbs up.
That'd be good. I think, and just to go back, I don't have anything to add other than what you have already said. Having a vision is great. Having a document that clearly states that vision is great. Having goals is great. Measuring those goals and showing progress to those goals is key because otherwise it just becomes another piece of paper that gets that page away.
Okay. I think we'll need a little help as a board on that, so.
I'll share, Kathy, I'll bring up last year's and I'll move that forward so that Dr. Swetchnow and Mr. Doherty can see how we have measured and how we've connected those in the past. So I'll bring up just that summary document. I think the principals have presented it twice a year typically, so I'll get those funneled out just as a reminder of how we made that, how we made this.
And we should put that on a meeting agenda. Sorry, Kevin.
No, sorry, Kathy. I was gonna say exactly the same thing. I was wondering if Amy and her team would be ready at the next meeting to give us what that would look like, maybe lacking a specific building goals, et cetera, but just to keep things moving.
I'll show you what we've done in the past. And we adapt, I mean, Dr. Lorenz, Michelle and particularly Kathy and Michelle can speak for this. We've adapted and we tightened this up and made this better every year. To improve towards metrics and trying to figure out how to revisit it regularly and picking the right ones that make sense. We're constantly refining that. So, I mean, we certainly have those plans and can make those, always looking for ways to make those better.
Okay. I would suggest that we may not be ready, we might be ready to have this as a discussion item on June 23rd, but maybe not be ready to create the document. And think about the August meeting as when we want to have a document in a pretty decent form.
We want to have all of our data to fill in from this year into the documents to make the plans for growth for next year by end of June.
But if we could look at what you had suggested you would get out, especially to the new members, we could have it as a discussion item on the June 23rd meeting to get a little more refinement of what we are looking for as a document, not the particulars that would go on the document.
What you like, what you don't like, what you'd like to see differ? Absolutely.
I don't know how we do this from an organization perspective, but keeping track of this discussion in terms of follow-through on it. I don't know if Amy or if Kathy, one or both of you kind of keep track of what's supposed to be on the agenda so we make sure that.
We try to. We can try to do that.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else on the commitments or the Portrait of a Tiger document? Okay. I did want to note for the new members that we're pretty proud of the word ferocious in there, the ferocious learners. We had quite a bit of discussion about that. We're kind of proud that as Loveland Tigers, we have ferocious learners. So just thought I'd call that out for you.
Love it.
Okay. If there's nothing else on that, then we get to move to perhaps the meat of this meeting, and that is the financial planning portion. And I'm expecting that perhaps it's Mr. Hawley who's going to start us in that discussion.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Lorenz. So before we hop into the financial planning, levy scenarios part of the meeting, I just wanted to take a quick step back and just talk about Open Checkbook. So we did receive some concerns and some questions concerning Open Checkbook just recently, and so just again, just wanted to address those. So I do apologize if anybody has been on Open Checkbook and has tried to look at the data. Unfortunately, fortunately, we did actually provide data to Open Checkbook through April. Unfortunately, I'm not sure exactly what happened, but Open Checkbook accidentally duplicated our expenses in December, January, February, and March and did not upload the April data. So if you had looked at that recently, it was definitely inflated far more than what you would expect.
It was helpful?
It was helpful, yes. And so it has been updated today, so if you go on there, it is correct at this point. Just a little bit of understanding on how the data is uploaded into the system. As we've talked about, we have made it a part of our monthly process. So at the end of the month, when we are closing our books, if you're not familiar with closing the books, we look at all our transactions and make sure that our bank balance is actually matching with our transactions within the district. It's a way of accountability. It's a way of double-checking work, basically, in many ways. And so when we're talking about doing that on a monthly basis, you're typically talking about the second or the third day of the month as to when we're done with the books. And then we do send that information over to Open Checkbook. So hopefully, by the first, if not early second week, it is put on to their website. Part of the challenges that we do run into is there are naturally some concerns that we have on some information that can be put out there for people. It could be names of students. It could be, you know, things that are sensitive in a manner and legally and, not just legally, but I think rationally, we would not want to put any of that information out there. So we manually go through the data, Open Checkbook goes through the data as well, just to double-check and make sure that we're not putting any information out there that we should not be doing. So that information should roughly be taken care of by end of the first week of every month. So that will be updated.
You say you go through the data. That means that you, if I understand it right, have to review every individual transaction that's being uploaded to Open Checkbook. And I know I went through the check register, but I guess you regularly publish with the treasurer's report every month. I went through that last week. And I'm not sure, but I'm guessing there were 400-ish kinds of transactions there, so you've got to look at every one of those. And I don't know how you discover the fact that a child's name is in a memo line or some such later.
Yeah, I mean, and so that's, you're bringing up the challenge there is it's literally going through it and looking for it manually. There's some codes that we can look at that we know may have that kind of data there. But, you know, as a father, as somebody who has kids, and I really would not want any information out there that should not be out there, we double-check it no matter what. So we look at certain codes, but we look at everything line by line.
So I think it's important for the public to understand that there is a fairly significant amount of overhead that goes into publishing that data that should be published, but it's not a matter of just pressing a key on the keyboard. There's a significant amount of manual effort that goes into it as well, as I've come to understand.
Absolutely. Yep, that's a good point. And so even going on with that, I'm just talking about getting the historical data on Open Checkbook as well. You know, during this process, we've all been working remotely. And my staff in particular has been able to work remotely, but they are going to be coming back here shortly and we will start going through that process once again. That did limit our abilities to expedite that process. I wouldn't say necessarily have a date as to when that will be accomplished. As we talked about, our fiscal years are July through June. This is typically a relatively busy time of year in the treasurer's office to make sure that everything is buttoned up by the end of the year. But I would say we could potentially accomplish that in the next month or two. So that's what would be the expectation.
Can you remind us, Kevin, of how far back the data currently goes?
Yeah, so the data currently goes back five years and includes this current fiscal year, so almost six years' worth of data.
Okay. Thank you.
And Kevin, one other question. So obviously, there's some time involved in making sure that we don't mistakenly upload things that shouldn't be uploaded. Are there other challenges between Open Checkbook and the accounting system that we use in the schools that would lead to discrepancies between those two sources of data?
Yeah, it's a good question. There's not necessarily major discrepancies between the two. So for instance, really the only thing that I've seen that does not show up on Open Checkbook that does show up on our books are transfers or advances. So if you look at the five-year forecast, you'll see that we annually have a $20,000 transfer and this past year we had a $60,000 advance. But we can talk at length as to what those are, maybe in a future date. But those are the only ones that I've seen that don't necessarily show up. So there are potentially slight discrepancies between the two. And I actually looked at the last five years and saw the same thing, that there are slight discrepancies.
But in general, it's safe for us as a board to assume that if residents of the district are looking at that information, it pretty closely mirrors what we know to be the financial truth.
Absolutely. Yes. As long as they don't duplicate months.
Good point.
So, yeah, and so the process on getting that uploaded is, again, pulling out all those years' worth of data. So thousands of lines of data going through and making sure that that information is accurate and then also that it's not containing any personally identifiable information. We send it to legal so that they can look through it as well. Obviously, they're not fully aware of all of our student names, but the more eyes on it, the better.
And then just in general, how much time is involved with that from a school district standpoint, from your office standpoint, really? Each month is now, we've gotten rid of the backlog. We just have an ongoing month-to-month time loss. Can you estimate what that is?
Yeah, so we just still have a little bit of a backlog because there had been discussions of still five more years' worth of data. So we're still going to go five more years of historical beyond what we currently have. On a month-to-month, it's not a significant amount of time, but it's definitely time. I would have to ask Lindsay, who's my assistant treasurer, as to how long that takes on a regular basis. I would say no more than an hour, maybe.
Per month?
Per month, correct. Yes.
And for something like going back the extra five years, whatever you're working on there, we're going to be asking you to do a lot of analytical work in the coming months to figure out a financial strategy for the district, resolve the levy issue and all those kinds of things. How do you resolve conflicts between what we're going to be asking you to do and the need to respond appropriately to requests from the public for additional information? How do you handle the balance between those two?
Good question. We try to balance it as best as we can. You know, I rely a lot on my staff to be able to do that. Unfortunately, this is also a busy time for them, just naturally. You know, I try to respond to people as quickly as I possibly can. I don't necessarily have a certain strategy as to how I do that. But I think, in my particular role, what's potentially most important right now is getting you the information that you need to be able to make really well-thought-out and educated decisions. So, you know, put an extra time, try to do everything I can to be able to respond to the public. I'm not sure if that answered the question.
Yeah, I was asking you just to expose your thinking on it. I think, you know, in my mind, the lights are going to turn out at some point down the road unless we figure out a financial plan. So to me, that's urgent and critical and whatever word you want to put on it. But out of the other side of my head, there is this ongoing need for ultra-transparency with everybody. And, you know, the last thing I want is for the public to, you know, lose confidence in our willingness to be as open as possible. So it's a balance. You know, I don't know how to help you with that one, except maybe talk about it a little bit here in public so people, you know, kind of hear the conflict that sometimes goes on.
Yeah, that's the thing is, I mean, you know, I know it's just us sitting here and then obviously people are watching this as well, but, you know, as a person, I would just ask for a little bit of grace during certain times as we're just trying to do the best that we can with limited resources. I was an economics major in college and so, you know, you talk about finite resources and limited time availability. And, you know, I'm sure we've all had those days that you wish the day wasn't 24 hours, but was 36 hours.
Yeah. Well, how many people are there actually that are able to do these two tasks that we're talking about? Respond to the analytical needs and respond to the information sharing request?
Yeah, so within the district, from an analytical standpoint, it's really me. I'm basically the only person that can really walk through that process and help through that process. When we're talking about record requests, it's me and one other individual. So, you know, I do my best to try to pass as much as I can on to Lindsay. She takes care of a lot of the year-end closings. Um, she takes care of um, a lot of the the year-end closing as well. Um, so it's it's, you know, at most, it's two people.
Alright, best answer long-term is to automate as much of this as possible, obviously.
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely. Alright, well, there's not any other questions about Open Checkbook, um. Before we get into the levy scenarios, uh, one piece that I wanted to talk about was uh, paid-up participate fees. Um, so this is for a little bit of um. Background for Kevin and Eric as well, is with the last levy, we had discussed, um. The possibility of having to increase our pay-to-participate fees if there happened to be a failure in the levy. Um, in November, we we did that, we only did it on the athletics side. Uh, what we did more in that particular case is look at. Some of our neighbors, some of our ECC schools to see where their current uh, paid-to-play fees were and. Uh, match them up similar similarly to that. Uh, when we talk about fees and when we talk about. Uh, basically, all the fees that we're we're looking at with an extracurricular activities at this point in time. Uh, they take care of of uh, expenses that I would consider much more consumable items. So let's say on the fine art side, it might be costumes, it might be t-shirts, um. For tickers like that, on the athletic side, it's taking care of balls, it's taking care of referees. Um, uh, the one piece that we have not factored in and and we have slightly factored in with the increased paid-up play fees from November. Are what we call supplemental positions, so if you're not familiar with supplemental positions. Uh, a supplemental is just the name for uh, basically the the salary that. Um, is is brought on when we have coaches or if we have. Um, directors for certain extracurriculars on the fine art side. Um, so, for instance, the football coach has a supplemental because he. Takes up a lot of his time and and helps with our kids and teaching them how to play football, um. He's not a volunteer, and so there is there is a cost aspect to that. Um, as a district, we are only allowed to uh, charge. Fees for extracurricular activities when it comes to these supplementals. Um, and that's 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 the big law, there's there's a lot of different nuances there. And so basically, what we've looked at from our paid-to-participate, we've looked at not necessarily just our athletics, we've looked at. All of our extracurriculars and then includes our fine arts. And on the fine art side, we've looked at areas that are extracurricular in nature, so they're not curricular, they're not co-curricular. And uh, looked at what those supplementals are, basically, what I've done at this point in time. Is on the athletic side, I've taken into account. Uh, our athletic director, any support staff within. Uh, the athletics plus their supplementals, and then looked at fine arts separately and looked at the fine the supplementals only for those activities that are extracurricular. Figured out the percentage of those, uh, what we were looking at with the failure in March was that we would have to increase revenue by roughly two hundred thousand dollars. And then determining what percentage on the athletic side versus the fine art side we would need to recoup. Um, when we're looking at athletics, uh, we are also looking at. Um, when we're looking at fees, we're also looking at Title IX concerns. Um, and that's why you will see on the athletic side, when we're talking about fees, basically a flat fee for. Those particular activities. Um, so all in all, when we've when we've looked at these, and this will be something that we will. Uh, approve at the end of June meeting, because I wanted to give you information, and it's not necessarily something I had sent out to you specifically, and I can send out. The information, but uh, what you're looking at. Is increased pay-to-participate fees uh, due to the the failure of the levy and then. It's supporting part of our general fund. So your question might be is even though these are athletics. Why the need to do this? Well, we pay out all all of these supplementals out of our general fund. And so this is salary that we are looking to at least recoup a portion of it by. Um, creating a creating a fee or increasing a fee in this particular case. Um, so, basically, at this point in time, when you're looking at athletics. Uh, you are looking at. Um, high school being roughly around three hundred ten dollars per sport. And on the middle school side, two hundred sixty-five dollars. And then on the fine art side, I could send out this information, but it depends on the activity. And the percentage as to how much those supplementals make up the total. Amount that is needed from the fine art side. Because on athletic side, the Title IX concerns are we can't necessarily charge. Volleyball a different amount than diving, um. That would not be equitable for that particular purpose.
Kevin, could I just, could I just um, clarify or make sure I understand what you're saying? It's uh, these fees, the pay-to-play that we are talking about. Is going to be a fee that is applied toward the supplemental. The pay for the coaches and those kinds of things, so that there's no. Reason to be looking into this to say that it costs more, for example. Uh, for equipment for this sport as opposed to that sport, we're not talking about fees. That are covering equipment, we're talking about fees that are covering the cost of staffing an athletic department, staffing a music department. Not the department, I'm sorry, I spoke incorrectly, staffing the. The supplemental, staffing the extracurricular activities that are either sports-related or music-related or that kind of thing.
Yes, that's correct, and and so the fees that are currently being collected on the fine art side and on the athletic side currently take care of. All the equipment, all those particular needs, um. So it's, yes, it's it's not, it's not specifically looking at that, that is correct, um. You know, one of the things that is a challenge as well, and I know it was discussed earlier with. Um, the individuals who have now since uh, gone off the board. Was looking at each uh, athletic activity differently, and the challenge that we're running into is title line issues. Um, also, some of the the thoughts on it as well, not necessarily thoughts, the reality of it is. There are certain sports that bring in more revenue than others, and, you know, I know we're just, we're we're a high school, we're. We're a local school district, but this is also something that you run into on a collegiate level as well. And so, uh, when we're looking at these supplementals, it is something. That we have to spread it across all activities.
Kevin, sorry, can you explain again, Kathy alluded to it, but I'm not sure that I understand it, just from my lack of knowledge of history. Is there already a fee associated with playing football or being in the band, and now we're adding a second new fee to make up for the supplemental?
Yes, great question, um, on the athletic side, there was already a fee for all sports. Um, it was, uh, it was actually, uh, it was a hundred and five dollars. For all athletics except for lacrosse and football. And now, uh, what we're looking at is increasing those fees. On the fine art side, there were, there are already fees if you're involved in those. Um, it's just done a little bit differently, uh, the the music boosters collect the fees and pay those expenses. So what would happen in this particular case on the athletic side is it would be an increase in fees. On the fine art side, it would be a new fee from the district, because right now there are not fees. For many of these activities.
Because those costs were previously covered by the booster organizations?
Correct, yes.
And um, with your suggestion of, if I remember the number, three hundred and ten dollars for high school as a as a fee, is that in addition to what's currently being paid? Or is that to bring it up from whatever you're paying now to three-ten?
Great question, that's that's to bring it up to three-ten, so three-ten would be the the fee.
And on average, just a three-ten fee make all of our sports self-sustaining, is a school district still. Paying a significant amount of money to sustain extracurriculars, or is all becoming essentially self-funded?
That's a great question, so with the with the March levy, we had looked at um, raising two hundred thousand dollars a year. Um, I've done some rough math on it, but basically, the additional. Uh, revenue to get to three hundred and ten takes care of about fifty-five percent of those expenses. So when you hear districts um, potentially going through a levy scenario and talking about full pay-to-play. Uh, you can kind of do that math, that there's a potential that full pay-to-play would be roughly closer to six hundred dollars.
Right. And 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 if we decide it's an institute, that the projected savings. Over what we're saving now is three hundred thousand dollars a year?
Yes, it's just a little bit over three hundred thousand dollars on the the musics, I'm sorry, on the athletic side.
And the music side?
The music, it would be.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but that is not what we're considering right now.
It's roughly another thirty-nine to forty thousand dollars, so you're looking at.
This is a much bigger part, okay, so then just to reiterate, so all of us have heard that as a board. If we were going to go to a model in which all extracurricular activities were fully funded by the participants. It would cost them about twice as much as what we're proposing, and it would save the school district roughly three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year.
Yeah, probably closer to four hundred. Yeah.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Kevin, for what you're proposing to provide to us, I I believe you said that this would be something that the board would vote on. At the June twenty-third meeting. Are you proposing, are you going to provide the board with a list of all of the fees? Um, so that would be on the agenda and there could be discussion, uh, I'm not asking that we. Um, discuss every fee and decide whether a fee should be five dollars more or something, but that. We would be able to discuss at the June twenty-third meeting exactly what those fees are and say, this is what we're voting on, is those exact fees.
Absolutely, yes, yes, so I just wanted to have more of a discussion first, and then. Since we have a couple of weeks, two to three weeks, if there are any concerns or different ways of looking at it, then we could potentially do that.
Who did you, who? Who worked on this, was it your, was it your? Job to work on this, did you get input from the athletic director, did you get an input from principals, did you get input from? Uh, directors, or has it been your work so far?
Yeah, that's a great question, um, so I would say, you know, some of the early stages, to be very honest with you, I I worked with a lot of my colleagues to see. Um, so when I say colleagues, my treasurer, uh, colleagues. As to how they have uh, looked at this in the past in some of their own districts. Um, but once once we kind of went down a little bit of a framework, uh, I've worked directly with. Uh, our music department, um, so I've worked with our chair in that department to understand our purchase, roughly our participation rates. Uh, what fees are already on the booster side, uh, which activities are considered extracurricular versus curricular, co-curricular. Uh, I've spoken with music boosters, um, so that they are aware of what is occurring and what what may occur. Um, same thing on the athletic side, I've had numerous conversations with our athletic department so that they're aware of this. Uh, talking about the details, and then also with our athletic booster, uh, president, um, so they're. They're fully aware of it, um, you know. A lot of that conversation was, since there are gonna be some increased fees, is how can we potentially. Uh, especially even on the fine art side, since uh, music boosters does a lot of that, um. Uh, the receipts as to how can maybe they limit some of their costs, uh, so it doesn't really impact or affect families quite as much, um.
Can you, can you give us an example of a music fee, we we've gotten an example of a sports fee, can you give us an example, for example, of a band? What what band currently pays as a fee that goes through the music boosters. Uh, system and what the fee might be for the band that would be a district fee?
Yeah, so uh, so so from my understanding, uh, the fees for marching band, um, for uh, new individuals in marching band is four hundred sixty dollars. If you are a veteran, it's four hundred and ten dollars. And so that's what is currently uh, being brought in by the the boosters. Uh, when you look at the participation versus the amount that we need to try to recoup. It's a potentially fifty-dollar fee from the district. Um, so that that gives you a little bit of idea on that, that is. That is currently uh, the highest fee that that is, uh, that is an activity that we have the most. Um, supplementals for, so that that also plays into that as well. Yes, Kevin?
Uh, I don't know if this is for you or for Amy, but uh, just sensitivity, uh, we're talking about this to to families. Of limited financial means, who we, you know, certainly. Wanna, wouldn't want to disproportionately affect those students' ability to participate in these activities, how do you, how do you think about? Uh, taking care of those uh, those families, those students?
I'm sure Amy could chime in as well on this, um, so that's, I think that was what was vital about uh, bringing the boosters along through this process. Um, I can speak specifically on the athletic booster side, I had a lengthy conversation with Mr. Williams today. Um, just to, just to follow up with him, he's been aware that this was gonna, that this had the potential of happening for for a while now and. Just, I wanted to make sure, had one final conversation before we end this meeting. And uh, but a lot of what the athletic boosters does is they support the district, um. You know, but they and they they do support us substantially, uh, when you're talking about. Uh, on a regular basis for athletic, um. Uh, not necessarily the trainers to help students when they get hurt, but like, um. Personal training and things like that, they 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 supplement a lot of the athletic side. And um, they also do a partake in fundraising in order to help students out that are not able to afford. The 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 paid-up play fees, and so, again, it's it's bringing. Mr. Williams along and his board along so that they're they're aware of what these fees are and how they may be able to potentially help students in that particular case.
Same things true on the music side, um, you know, those who work closest with the students. Um, try to in multiple ways uh, communicate to kids and the families that we never want finances to be. Um, but preclude you from participating in um, in an activity, whether it be. Um, after-school running glove up to show choir, which would be, you know, one of the more expensive um, activities for families. So the boosters are, the boosters do a lot of great things. But uh, behind the scenes, probably one of the most amazing things they do is they make sure that all of our students can participate. Um, in activities if they are in long-term financial struggles or even just short-term from an immediate standpoint. Um, and there are lots of avenues that the boosters are able to do that, um, what is. What I think particularly special about our booster organizations is they if they they don't ask questions. Uh, they are there to support the kids, so if the school has confidential information or has information that's sensitive to protect a student or a family. Um, they can simply reach out to the boosters to make sure that those kids can participate and the boosters handle that, it's not as if. Um, there's an interview process or or things that allow, it really is just about supporting and making sure our kids can participate. On both sides, both fine arts and for men and athletic day work.
And Kevin, one just one more question for you, the reason that we came up with the number that you've you've projected. Is because that was our commitment as a board to cut expenses after the most recent bailout.
Yeah, so I, so in a way, it's it's uh, more or less cutting the budget, so obviously, in this particular case, this will be increased revenue. But it was part of the uh, the roughly two million dollars if the levy had failed in March as to what we were going to. Uh, reduce the budget by, that's correct. And and just one other little piece, I know we've talked a lot about supplementals, uh, one one piece that we are just going to continue to research and look into is. From 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 our understanding as a district, um, on the marching band side, uh, there has not been. A fee for transportation. a fee for transportation purposes. So on the athletics, the pay to, the pay to play fees currently pays for transportation. And there are some other instances with the boosters where they do pay for transportation. It, it has, it has been through our research and understanding that, that has not been occurring on the marching band side. So we are going to look into that. So that may be an additional fee on marching band outside of supplementals. Just, so I just wanted you to be aware of that as well.
Kevin, do you know, just for a point of reference, you said you spoke to some of the surrounding schools, what the high end is for the pay to play fee?
Yes, I didn't, I didn't necessarily talk to them about what the high end was. It was more the process as to when they've had levy challenges or financial challenges as to how they have gone about looking at their, their pay to participate fees in general. It's like it was also a conversation with, with legal to make sure that we're doing this properly. It, within the ECC, I'd have to pull it up. Well, just a second.
Kevin, you can type and think at the same time, which I can't. Is there, are there any of the districts that are forcing a higher cost sharing onto the participants of these extracurriculars? Is, is 100% cost share back to the participants, something that's been done anyplace?
Hey, Amy, I, I don't have many specific instances. I know that, and I'm just gonna say this, so, so I just pulled up. Again, this, this is what was provided by our athletic department. So what are you looking at? Some pay to participate fees. West Quar months at 250 for both middle school and high school. From my understanding is that was, that was substantially higher at one point in time. I know in Little Miami, when they had some major financial issues, my understanding is it, it did go to that. I know that Mrs. Johnson at the, at the high school was in that district during that time and has mentioned, I believe, $500 to $600 paid to practice, paid to play fees on the athletic side. So it's, it, it has occurred before.
And then that was the example I was going to give. I don't know that anybody has done 100%, but certainly getting that closer to that and approaching it makes it a significant, a significant cost to families.
Yeah, Little Miami was in finance, was in fiscal emergencies. The reality on their side was that they were actually basically borrowing money from the state to, to make sure that they could keep the lights on. It was money that they had to pay back. My guess is in that particular instance, they went to full pay to play.
Well, I think that that's, I think that your proposal seems very reasonable. It's unfortunate that we're in that spot. I certainly feel strongly that you can only lean on booster organizations so much in order to help fund the people who can't afford to pay those, play those sports. And I'd hate to see us have to increase that number. So go from there.
I understand. All right. Any other questions about pay to participate before we move on to levy information? All right, well, I will get that information out to you so that, so that you have it on hand. And so if you have any questions in the meantime, please, please do let me know. So what we're going to talk about now is some levy scenarios. I sent each of you six specific scenarios and sent you the current five-year forecast so that you kind of had a base level understanding of, especially the, the graphs as to kind of the impacts. It can use a baseline. Before we hop into it, just so that you know what was put into the scenarios, it is, it is the May forecast that was approved last week. So those are the assumptions as information. An easy way to look at this as well, when you're, when you're talking about, and, and we haven't got it lengthed this, but just talking about any decreases in expenditures or when we're talking about millage, every mill in the district is roughly $950,000 of annual revenue. So millage is a function of the total value of taxable property in the district. It's a thousandth of that prop, of that amount. So that comes up with a $950,000. Also, when you do the math, and you'll see it on there, is the first year. So right now, we're in fiscal year 20 and for a calendar year 20. If you pass a levy in calendar year 20, the first revenue comes in in calendar 21. So January, February, let's say hypothetically, there was a levy that was passed this year. The first revenue that we would see as a school district is January, February of 2021. And since we work on fiscal years, you will see that the first fiscal year that we receive that money is a half-year's collection because January would be the second half of that fiscal year. So that's what's important when you look at it is just understanding when those revenues do come into the district and that they are delayed ever, they are delayed slightly. We could run through each of the scenarios. I mean, I guess what I would like to open it up to first, since you've had these in hand, is are there any questions on any particular scenario or thoughts on them?
I'll, I'll let Mr. Doherty ask his question, but I just have a general question about what he provided. In general, those scenarios are showing what would be needed for a levy to last for a certain amount of time if presented in the, the the election that is noted on the scenario, correct?
Correct. So either.
But they are, but they are, yeah.
Either calendar year 20 or calendar year 21.
Right. And they are being presented as four, three years or four years or five years, but that is speaking to the length of time that that levy would last before another levy would be needed, not the length of time that the levy would be asked for. In other words, we're still talking about a typical continuing levy. It, it's just that your scenario shows an amount of millage and a date of election and how long that levy would allow the district to operate before another levy would be needed.
Yes, that, that is correct.
I just wanted to be sure I was reading them correctly.
Yes.
Okay, now it's.
Oh, sorry.
Did you want to go ahead?
I would, I would just go out with those scenarios. If we only have access to them or are they posted somewhere?
At this point in time, only the board has access to those. And we can, we can post those on board docs after the meeting as well.
I leave anything else?
No, that'll get to the moment.
Okay, was there somebody else? I'm sorry. Kevin, I, just maybe a couple of things here. Thank you for this. I, I've been working on this all afternoon. Building on it, doing some other modeling with it, et cetera. It's very helpful. First of all, the expenditures that you show in these scenarios, for everybody's, everybody's just, anybody who's looking at this in the public, the expenditures are the same between all of various scenarios. Would you just comment on what's the basis of the expenditure forecast? First of all, that you've got in here, and then I have a comment on that. And okay, so maybe just take it from there and I'll, I'll respond.
Yeah, and just, just a quick final question. Do you want me to go through like each line item or just basically what they're made up of?
No, just, just as a general, you know, we, we're spending what we're spending today. And you're showing some growth in those expenditures going out into the future. You might just, super high level. You know, you've made some adjustments to, you know, spending levels from a few months ago, for example. And despite you controlling expenses downward from where we were a short while ago, they do climb back up a bit over the life of these scenarios. But maybe just a, a comment about how you've, how you've modeled that out.
Yeah, absolutely. So, so, so we're in fiscal year 20. So right now, fiscal year 20 is, is actual, as we talked about it last week, that we were able to save roughly about a million dollars from what we had anticipated in our previous forecast. That had a lot to do with some COVID-related decreases, but then also what we've been able to do is utilize our permanent and permanent fund for some of our one-time expenses. So that's significantly less than what we had anticipated. Next year, the primary amount of our cuts that we've talked about because of the November and March levy failures occurs next year. So that's why I once again see significant decrease in fiscal year 21. In '22, '23, and '24, and so this is what is, what's partly important about this, is just to understand that in '25 and '26, so our five-year forecast is five years, it goes to fiscal year 24. What I have provided is trying to extrapolate that data out a couple more years so that we can do some planning. And '25 and '26 basically goes on the same assumptions as '22, '23, and '24. So we've seen roughly the same percentage increase that what you're seeing in the expenses for the next two years. On the expense side, what we're looking at is basically very limited growth, especially our purchase services, our supplies and our other objects. We're about 85% salary benefits. So any, any growth in those particular items is going to have substantial impact on the forecast. And those typically are our highest appreciating areas at times. What we are looking at when we forecast out, we try to forecast for negotiations. Our negotiated contract goes through the end of the next fiscal year. So we have actually pared down what we had previously. But in the past, we've typically done our current negotiated agreements. We pared that down to 1% increases on the base going forward. So that's why it's a little bit lower. And then also on the healthcare side, this year we had a 4% increase. We are still looking at, currently forecasting 9% a year based on the actuarial assumptions from our insurance consortium. So any savings that we would see on that would obviously impact that greatly. If, if you're, if you are looking at a 1% year-over-year change, either on the higher end or on the lower end, it's roughly about $50,000 savings a year.
So these expenditure increases are reflective of anticipated contractual moves, generally speaking. You don't have any new activities, new programs, new things embedded in any of this.
Yes, that is correct.
So I, I, you know, part of my, it's been a while since I've been an analyst, so you're gonna be 10 times better at this than I was. But, you know, I see annual rates of, of growth here in what the, the two, the three, actually more like the 3% kind of range. And just shy of that maybe over the horizon here. And I know some of the folks that I talk in, excuse me, some of the folks that I talk to in the community point out that, that we should have a further retrospective view of the base year. So I looked at that today and, you know, what I did was to, to think about compounded annual growth rates with 2017 as the, as the base year. And again, I, you know, you can check my math on, on this stuff, but I would see 2020 being like a four and a half percent. So from 17 to 20 would have been about four and a half, 4.6% actually annual growth rate. And largely because we drop the year-over-year going forward, a growth rate to the 3% range, the compounded annual growth rate starts to trail off a bit. And by the time we get out to '23, '24, you know, or maybe 3.2%, which for the record is higher than I would like it to be. But it does, it does take some fairly significant reductions to, to, to move this down further. And, and this would be the second question for you, that this is a revenue increase approach to the world. I would urge you to also look at an expense decrease approach to the world and a marriage between the two. So, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So, so I would say on the expense side, and it's, it's, you know, it's, it's a conversation that we've had in the past is, and, and obviously these things can change. This was the direction that the board was hoping the district would go in 2014. The levy was, in 2014, was anticipated the last four or five years. The 2019 levy would have been the fifth year. And so the 2014 levy was in anticipation of increased expenses, obviously to support educational side. So what we're looking at right now when we projected up going forward is current programming and services. And so, and I mean, you know, the reality is, is many things are possible. You know, we're, we're able to figure out ways to, to cut funding. I would say from Dr. Kraft, from my perspective, is more of a, we, we can always, we're always looking for efficiencies.
Right.
So kind of what you said is, you know, there are some pretty big decreases that would be required. It's, it's more of a, I would say it's more of a board conversation to give direction towards us as to what, what that looks like.
Well, this is why I'm bringing it up tonight and, you know, I, again, you're better at modeling this than I'll ever be, but I, I used your data here and I modeled a, a five-mill levy that goes into effect effectively next year in addition to a half a percentage point, very modest, half a percentage point decrease from our current anticipated spending rates. And I used as the kind of the modeling threshold to not drop below a, a cash balance of nine million. And that scenario, and it's just one of a million that, that you could propose, keeps us healthy well through 2026. So, you know, the combination of factors together can be more powerful than, you know, just leveraging one side of the issue.
Sure. And, and I guess what, and I don't know, Kathy, if you have something to say about that. I guess what I would say is that's, that's more of a direction, directional aspect of, if, if there's certain programs or things that, and again, I'm, I'm the money guy. So, you know, you, you tell me that we got to cut a certain dollar amount, we can figure that out. I would just say it's, it's a conversation between the board of what's, what are, what are the goals? What are, what are the things?
I'm just listening to, you know, our, our community members and maybe projecting, maybe I don't need to do this, but projecting concerns about, you know, economic health after, after COVID. And I'm just trying to be sensitive to that. So, you know, unfortunately, I don't know the district's spending well enough to say that X program, X or Y should be affected. I'm just talking about it purely from a financial perspective when I raise these, these perspectives, okay?
And, 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 and just in response to that, we can, we can model anything. You know, we can, we can figure out ways to do that. It's just, it's just that aspect of the qualitative side. I'm the quant guy. Will be the plot expense, will be plot expense.
Can you, can you, you need to ask her whether, I have Amy underneath me.
If, if I could ask a modeling question, because I had a question not with the, the model that Kevin just mentioned and, you know, I, I didn't see it, so I don't see all the pieces of it, but I did see the models that Kevin, you provided.
And. And which Kevin? Sorry.
Oh, Kevin Holly. The, the models that Kevin provided, our treasurer provided. There, I, I had a question about them in general. So for example, not to, to try and confuse anybody who's listening who doesn't have the, the, the full numbers in front of them, there are two scenarios that might last for three years, for example. And presented, if they were on the ballot in 2020, it would be a lower millage than would be needed in 2021. But the model that presented a higher millage in 2021, to me showed a much better outcome than the lower millage in 2020, which made me wonder, could, could we go lower millage in 2021 if we were only aiming for the outcome that the lower millage in 2020? in 2021 if we were only aiming for the outcome that the lower millage in 2020 showed? And, and you have to look at all the numbers, but I basically looked at the ending balance. And so the millage that you proposed to last three years in 2020 had a, if I'm reading it correctly, had a lower ending final balance than the higher millage in 2021 did. And it made me wonder, could we lower that 2021 millage to have that same, or did we need to raise the 2020 millage to get that same outcome? Those were the questions that occurred to me with the models that we were providing.
Yeah. So if you like it specifically, the three-year one, so what you're looking at, and I'll just, I will just state the millage amount. So if you go for a 4.1 mil levy in November of 20, it would last for eight year, or, sorry, for three years.
Eight years. Let's do it. We've got it. We're done.
Yeah. Sorry, that magic. So it will last for three years, because what we're still trying to make sure is we're getting roughly around that $9 million threshold on cash balance, as we talked about last week, that that has, that has major implications to be able to make sure that we're covering our obligations in the district. And so fiscal year 23, you see roughly 8.8 million. On the 6.3 mil in, in calendar year 21 for three years, what you see in fiscal 24 is roughly 8.7 million. So it's a difference of $100,000. I mean, it's, we can be nitpicky about it, but that's basically what you're looking at. The reason why I'm...
That's an additional year. If you look at 2023 at 8.8 million, 2024 goes down to 6 million, whereas on the other one, 2024 stays at that 8 million. It looks to me like it, it lasts longer, is, is what I would say.
And good question. So basically, what we're looking at is on the calendar year 20, you are receiving the revenue earlier. So you're seeing it last three years. So really, the three years is trying to get to fiscal year 23. On the calendar year 21, you're trying to get to fiscal year 24.
Got it.
But, yeah, but the difference that you see as well is any decisions that are made currently do have future impacts. So, you know, the higher the millage, the more revenue that the district does create for the district. But at the same time, is that it does have future impacts after that, that those future levies potentially could be lowered, or even have more possibility of lasting longer. So if you do look at that three-year one, in the, in the case of the 4.1 mills, and, and we've talked about the fact that we could, we can make it without going for a levy this current calendar year. It does get somewhat precariously close, but it can be done. But every year that you delay, you're delaying a year of revenue. But you can see in fiscal year 24, on the 4.1 mil done in calendar year 20, you're at 6.3 million in cash. The year after fiscal year 24, on the 6.3 mil in calendar year 21, you're at roughly $7.7 million. So you do have more opportunity with larger millage to make levies last longer. Because basically, what we've talked about is, is this is your revenue in districts, and especially in Loveland. And what you have is you have expenditures increasing. And what you do is you have to, you stair-step on the revenue side. And higher millage does increase that stair-step ever so slightly. That will make either a levy last longer or potential future levies be smaller in millage. Does that make sense?
Kevin, it makes perfect sense. And, and I think that Kevin Doherty's point too is, if we just look at this as an exercise in increasing revenue, I don't think that we're doing a good enough job as a board in making sure that we also look at this as an exercise in controlling expenses. Because your stair-steps, each height of the stair increases less with a lower growth rate. Now, the question for Dr. Kraus obviously then becomes, at what point do we harm the, the quality of education, which we become accustomed to here, and the experience for the students? And, you know, we know that 85% of our expenses is staffing. You know, unless we start cutting teachers, there's not, to my mind, a whole lot of opportunities for decreasing the growth per significantly. Unless it's figuring out how to fix salary structures and things along those lines. So those are the challenges that I see for us. I mean, I don't need to be lecturing you guys, you know that much better than I do. I just need help in figuring out what's possible.
If, if I could add one piece that might be useful particularly to our new board members, we did have, when we worked on our resolution for containing growth and, and limiting ourselves to the three-point, under a 3% growth rate. Kevin, Kevin Hawley, did we not have information, I can't remember if it was in the form of a five-year forecast, but it was information that showed us what happened to our district by getting to that rate. So we had some information that showed us if we kept it at 4%, if we brought it down to 3%. And was that provided to the board? And so could that be provided to Kevin Doherty and to Eric as well, so they could see the work that we did to maintain that lower rate of growth than we had been projecting?
Yeah. I mean, so basically, the, the rate of growth that we had was our February updated forecast. And so we had discussions about what the board felt comfortable with as to peeling back expenses and, and that growth rate in particular. So any information that we would have would be that February updated forecast. And then, and then the 6.95 mil levy made, basically pulling it back made sure that the March levy would last at minimum four years.
Thank you. Other questions on, in particular, the, the scenarios that Kevin Hawley has presented? Any discussion about, before we talk about any more scenarios or ways to proceed, any discussion of levies in general? In other words, thoughts about proceeding with a November levy as opposed to a May 2021 levy? Just thoughts about that. I'm not, I'm not asking for decisions, I'm just asking to talk around that a little bit.
I think, obviously, we have a lot of work to do before we can get to that decision with the transparency, with the trust of looking at where we could potentially cut without having an impact on student performance and programs. So, yeah, I could be, I guess...
I would agree, there's perhaps work to be done, but there's limited amount of time in which to do that work. For a November levy, we're talking about July. I saw Michelle raise her hand, and then Kevin Doherty.
I think that for November, there's just so many unknowns. We still don't know what the new budget will be for this date. We still don't know what school's going to look like in the fall. Even though they're not going to stop this from opening, there's going to be a laundry list of regulations, restrictions, guidelines, that is, is going to come at a cost. And I think before we can, we, we have to put that in order before we can even put what we currently have in order to see how we move forward. I, I think there's just still a lot of unknowns right now. And there's a lot of people still unknown if they're going to have employment.
Could I just add a point on that as well, just as people do you think about, talk to the rightest question, and I know this is roughly the reason that we have the next topic about calendars, but the first resolution, so if you're unfamiliar with levy process, there's two resolutions that need to be passed. There's a resolution of necessity and a resolution to proceed. The resolution of necessity has to be approved by the end of July. So basically, it's, it's roughly around the 20, the dates. Here, the date on it is, it has to be done by July 26. I've spoken with the auditor's office. They have been very accommodating over the last two levies. They typically like two weeks to be able to confirm. What they do is they certify the millage, the amount of revenue that actually is going to be created, so that we can confirm that it's actually going to do what we believe it's going to do. They typically prefer two weeks. They've been very kind to narrow it down to a week at times. Mrs. Disk is not going on vacation, from what she has told me, at the end of July, so we could potentially push it till later in July. And the next resolution has to be approved by August 5. So just as, as people are thinking about it, there's a lot of, oftentimes, I think there's a lot of misconception when we're talking about levies, that there's sometimes a lot of time to figure out that decision. And really, at this point, you're looking at a month and a half.
This seems so rushed, and I don't want to make the same mistakes that we've made.
Kevin, from what you presented us for projected budgets, and I've just kind of clicked through, the, the, the cost of a delay is essentially a significant increase in millage. The, and, you know, we just need to figure out, are we ready as a board to come back to our community after two failed levies and say, okay, now we've heard you, we've listened, and we know what we're doing, and this is why we're asking for this much? You know, I understand that there's a time crunch, and that's going to be really challenging, but I feel like I have a lot of listening to do still before I really understand what the community's hangups are. I've heard transparency, I've heard trust, I've heard fiscal responsibility, and I think we can work on all of those things. But I also think it's going to take us a little bit of time to show that we've worked on all of those things. I know that's not an answer, but that's my existential crisis.
And I had promised that Kevin Doherty got a chance to speak, so we'll move to him now.
I'm, I'm the worst.
Okay, good.
You're totally fine. Yeah. So a few, few comments on it. One, and, well, number one is that there is tremendous uncertainty out there. Unfortunately, uncertainty is likely to increase over time. We always think that we have a better feel for the future tomorrow, but this is one of those unusual times where tomorrow may be more difficult than today. And when I took this role, I didn't think for a moment that I would be leaning towards, you know, suggesting, you know, going to bat number three in a relatively near term. And I'm not, I'm not actually recommending that tonight, but I am talking about the, the environment that we are in, that we could find sort of the makings of the proverbial perfect storm by waiting too long to go to the public for help on this funding issue, because their perceptions of their ability to, to be part of the solution may decrease substantially six months or a year from now, where they might be more amenable to something of, you know, reasonable dimensions today. But it brings up the point about what we in the, you know, in the business world call VOC, or Voice of the Customer, in this case, Voice of the Community, getting a real understanding of what is going on in the minds of the community, where they're at, and really spending some, some heads-down time connecting with people and, and trying to understand that. And I'll wrap it up with, you know, I, I'm here in part because I, I bring a lot of years in the business world to our, our discussions. And I can't help but reemphasize the point that this has been a discussion about revenue. And, you know, the business of running the school system has essentially two lines or two columns, whichever way you, you want to orient it. It's, it's what comes in and what goes out. The thing that we have the most amount of control over, although it's, it's far more painful, is what goes out of the, of the, of the checking account. What comes in is, the only thing that's certain there is the rate of, of dollars that are coming in today. We don't know what, what that's going to look like necessarily down the road. We can't control expenses. So I think we have to have kind of a full system view of the solution to this, this problem. We have to have income, and we have to have expenses both addressed. You know, as part of me to think the community would go, you know, they would feel better if we, they would trust us more if we demonstrated clearly, decisively, some strong fiscal measures in addition to asking for new taxes. So I'm just really sensitive to those points. Kathy, you know that I, I have, whatever you think is appropriate, you tell me, but I wanted to talk about...
I was just asking for other comments to your comments.
Sure.
I mean, I guess I would only have one comment that, you know, I, it was what I was trying to get at when I was asking Kevin Hawley what information we had about cuts that we've made and the resolution to maintain or stay under a certain amount of growth to perhaps have a discussion of what has already been taken out. I, I do understand what you are talking about, Kevin Doherty, and, and talking about looking at expenses. I think that discussion should include what has already been cut and where we are on particular programs, and what a percentage point cut of expenditures would mean, where it would come from, what programs it would impact. I have no problem having that discussion. I, I would assume that Kevin Hawley and Amy would need some, some direction more than just cut expenditures this much. It would be, tell us if we were to cut expenditures that much, where can it come from? Because in, in certain areas, we may be at a place where it cannot come from there, has to come from other places. And so I think we would need, to have our discussion, we would need to know where those cuts could be made. I don't see any other raised hands. So Kevin Doherty, I think you were indicating that you had additional thoughts that you wanted to add after that one. Is that correct?
Yeah, Kathy, I'll defer to you on whether this is an appropriate time to get into it or not, but I did have thoughts about what do we do? How do we approach solving the dilemma? And again, you tell me if this is the right time or later.
Well, I, I am not sure the thoughts on how the board approaches it, whether it's a matter of, does the Board Finance Committee look at these scenarios and ask for the information about additional cuts, where they could come from? And then does the Finance Committee present it to the board? Does the board feel that there are other things that they need before we could talk about this at June, on June 23? Is there a feeling, if, if there's a strong feeling that we are seriously considering a November levy? When do we need to get this information? When do we need to have these conversations? Because those July and August dates that Mr. Hawley was talking about are probably pretty simply dates where we say yes or no. There's a lot of work that needs to come before those. Those July and August meeting dates are not meetings to discuss what would be happening, the, the discussion, and the work would have had to come before that. So ways to proceed. I see that Mrs. Washburn has unmuted her microphone. Did you have a comment that you wanted to make?
Well, it was more a question for Kevin, when he said you had ideas. Are you just talking on the financial side or the whole picture? Because I...
I, I have a suggestion for discussion tonight about really more from a process perspective. How do we, how do we start to untangle this thing and, you know, start to arrive at a, at a decision? It's just some thoughts that I, I put together for discussion tonight. It's not the answers, but it is sensitive to the timeline that Kevin Hawley has shared with us, at least the, the near-term one. And we, you know, part of the outcome of the process could be that we decide not to do anything. At least the, the near-term one. And we, you know, part of the outcome of the process could be that, uh, we decide not to do anything uh, in 2020 and we push it out, but the process that I had in mind allows for coming to that determination.
I mean, I guess I would defer to Kathy to choose the president. I've been doing this longer, but I personally would be in favor of hearing how to untangle everything because doing it the same way, again, isn't gonna work. We need to do something different, obviously.
Okay, I'm, I'm seeing, I saw this Ms. Pettit nod on her head. I haven't seen Dr. Schuetzenau nod his head. Uh, that, that's what I would do is ask the board for agreement to hear ideas.
I'm practicing my listening skills.
I guess I'm going to say that it sounds like you should go ahead and present your ideas, Kevin Dougherty.
Okay, if I, if I do this right, I'm gonna put up a, a simple slide here. Uh, I hope I do this right.
I'm looking forward to this.
Okay, is it out there?
Yep.
Okay, so this is just, just a practical, down-to-earth approach, recognizing that, uh, at least from my perspective, there is some urgency around arriving at a decision. And Kathy and I talked very, very briefly before the meeting got started, and, uh, the alternative approach to this is the Planning Commission. Uh, and I've got an open mind about how to approach this, but without knowledge or sensitivity about that, this is what I came into tonight thinking. One was that, you know, in order to go fast, we have to have relatively small target group of people that can get down into the, into the details and, and figure this out. Um, so I, I propose to your forming a small work group to develop the financial strategy with a mandate to kinda, you know, first, first of all, get clear about, um, what we're trying to do as a district, what our goals et cetera are. Um, we don't have to reinvent that wheel. We, we've got, uh, the documents actually that we talked about earlier tonight and some evolution of those documents in terms of the metrics uh, that could serve as, um, the, the goal, the goal statement that our financial strategy is intended to support. Um, then there's the, the, the point of ensuring that the way we're spending money actually aligns to the goals, the visions, and the intended results, and doing a critical assessment of whether we're being effective in spending against those goals. Um, necessarily, you've gotta assess, and this is what I called before, the VOC. Uh, again, in the business world, it's Voice of the Customer. Here, it's Voice of the Community. Assess the ability of the community to financially support the vision. I'm not answering how we do that here. Um, there's a number of different strategies that we could undertake over a relatively short period of time to reach out into the community and get the pulse. Um, the, the, the mandate would be to recommend a, both a spending and funding, I've been hitting on that a lot tonight, I guess, uh, both a spending and funding strategy to the board by July 15th. So six weeks uh, is all that we have to, to do this with, which gives the board about 10 days to prepare for any, and I should've underscored it, any potential resolution of necessity preliminary to a motion being required, uh, until like 26. Again, I'm not saying that, that we come out with, um, a, a resolution of necessity, uh, but we, if we're gonna, this is kind of a timeline that we have to live with. Uh, just as a starting point, as I suggested, uh, Amy, Kevin, Eric and I, from a financial, uh, uh, committee perspective. Um, and I also, uh, suggested here that we, we do something incremental, uh, what I've called an advisory team, that are, are individuals that we invite, uh, to, to help us, uh, understand their perspective, the community's perspective, et cetera. Uh, a representative principal from one of our schools, uh, representative teacher, a parent, um, and, uh, two, what I call, community reps. So, so, uh, again, reaching into the pro and the, and the con groups maybe, or perhaps to make sure, uh, that we have a, a, a broad tent, uh, in which to have this conversation. Uh, absolute transparency, uh, on this. Um, do, do our working sausage-making meetings online, make them visible to, to the public, uh, produce minutes after them. My anticipation would be that we'd have to have a whole bunch of meetings, uh, between now and July to get this work done. Uh, and the larger the group, the more difficult it is to, you know, pull people together, add consistency, et, et cetera. So I've tried to keep the group, uh, very small. Um, it's bigger than normally I'd, I'd like it to be frankly, but uh, there's, there's different elements of the, of the, the community that I, I think have a voice that, that, that needs to be heard. So that gets us up to, I think, uh, nine, you know, nine, uh, individuals with this particular approach. Uh, the, 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 uh, the meetings online thing, it touches on a separate subject that we talk about maybe later on, but it's kind of expediting resolution of the issue of making our, our board, uh, meeting videos um, available to the public. And that's a separate subject, we'll talk about it later. Uh, but I think, uh, transparency again is critical. Not the only way to do things, just my ideas about how to do things.
I am unable to see anyone who wishes to speak, so you're gonna have, oh, there we are, we're back.
I hope.
Thanks, yes. Um, so thoughts? Uh, Eric.
Did you like that? The, um, Kevin, uh, thanks so much for taking the time to do that. I, I personally appreciate the fact that you spent so much thinking about not only where our challenges lie, but how can we in a very abbreviated timeframe try to address those challenges? And, um, I think that that's a, a great outline of how to do that. As, I think especially realizing that we've got about six weeks to figure that out at the most.
Uh, good thoughts.
I agree of the same sentiment. I appreciate the presenting the problem as well as the start of the solutions, or how to get to the solution. Uh, I just wonder if we could tap into some, um, Planning Commission members for the sake of time, when you're talking about parents or community representatives. What's a thought?
Right, and so Eileen and I tomorrow have a meeting with the Planning Commission, and that, I think, will be a great resource to help us with that. It's a little bit broader of a resource than you've talked about. There's 25 members total. So we wouldn't be able to bring them into that process, but through Eileen and I, we should be able to help to gather the information we need to reflect what you were, that you were suggesting.
I wonder if, uh, since you are talking about a substantial amount of work, I wonder if this board wouldn't perhaps agree to the Finance Committee, um, Eric and Kevin Dougherty and Kevin Hawley, and then I, I know that Dr. Kraus has gotten added into this. She's not, uh, always at Finance Committee meetings. But if those four people would be charged by this board as the working group that is working through this information, and that the board as a whole, as a five-member group, understand that that working group might have a meeting or two meetings, or might use different methods to get the input that they're looking for. Um, in other words, not schedule five meetings between now and July 15th with that particular group of nine people, but schedule Finance Committee meetings, which are posted, can be online, can be, um, minutes posted, and that at one meeting perhaps th- there are people who are actually invited to be at the meeting. At another meeting, the Finance Committee and Mr. Hawley and Dr. Kraus report, uh, information that they have received from people. So it's not to set up an organization that's kind of going end around the Planning Commission and setting up a set of meetings. Just make it a little more ad hoc, a little more informal. Um, I wonder if that would be something that would work as well.
Kevin, do you have thoughts on that?
Yeah, I, I, I'm, again, what I propose is just an approach. Uh, it, it wasn't intended to be hard and, and fast. Um, I do think that, uh, you know, we could, we could do this under the auspices of the Board Financial Committee, uh, and to Kathy's point, use that existing structure, um, and supplement it with the invited, um, Advisory Group, which I'm just kind of weaving things together right now. The Advisory Group perhaps being staffed by folks that are already, uh, identified on the Planning, uh, Commission, maybe Planning Commission, Financial Committee, I don't know. That, that's something, uh, certainly could could talk through tomorrow night, et cetera. So I think there could be a blending of ideas here. Uh, again, my, my experience is that... Okay, so if we agree that we have to decide about a levy this year or not, um, we've got a tight timeline to, to make that decision. Um, and in order to make a quick decision, we have to have a relatively small, focused group in order to get that work done. Those are my primary concerns.
And, and I understand your thoughts on that, Kevin, and I think they are good thoughts. Uh, at the risk of sounding like I'm whining or complaining, and I absolutely am not, it is my belief that there were serious attempts on the part of this board or previous boards to, to learn that kind of information previously for previous levies. Now, whatever our failures were, whatever our mistakes were, um, however it didn't work for those levies, there was no, um, there was certainly serious attempt to gain that kind of information from the community, from the teachers, from the parents. And, uh, whether that was a failure on our part, or whether that was simply what was chosen that allowed those levies to fail, if you see what I'm saying. We did seek that information. So all I'm talking about in the, 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 the format or the, the input that this working group gets, I'm not sure that just having a meeting with the Finance Committee and a select group of four or five other people is going to get that. I'm wondering if we need to talk a little bit about the way that we get even more information than that. Uh, whether it's a, a survey that's put out, whether it's, it, that's all I'm saying is I don't, I, I understand the attempt to get more information, to do it better. It, I'm just not positive we have hit on the exact right way yet.
You know, a hundred percent agreement with you. I, I did not intend the five, uh, the, the five-member Advisory Board to answer that question.
Yeah.
Um, because I, you know, I think about, you know, uh, 10 different strategies to, to, to reach out into the community um, and get where they're at today. And I would say that, you know, communication would be defined differently today than uh, back in, uh, October or January because the public has already spoken. They, they're at, they're at an announced position. Um, and I'm sure that there's some follow-on thinking that's gone on in the community since those votes were, were cast. Um, they, they delivered the message, and I think what they're looking for is how have we heard it? And, and what are we gonna do with the message that they've delivered?
Good point, good point. Michelle?
Um, as we all know, there is a group out there that, um, and they seem to be all aligned with, with, um, each other that have some definite ideas on where our spending has gone, haywire or whatever. And it seems to be the group that we missed going forward with our other levies, that we somehow missed that, this group that has an opinion, that has some suggestions, that has some ideas. And I feel that it's very important that we include one of these people from that group of aligned people to, to give us some insight.
Yeah, absolutely. And, and Kathy, I'm just, I'm, I just wanna echo a little bit what you said. Um, I know that the, the board worked very hard to engage the public. I, I know that those levies would not have been put on unless the, the thought was that the due diligence had been done. Um, and, and I agree, there's a huge challenge. Uh, there, there's the challenge of engaging the people who are unengaged. And they, you have no idea how they're gonna vote if they won't come and talk to you. And I think that's part of the difficulty of what's happened in the past. There's another group that was very clear that they were unhappy with some of the decisions that led to the growth and the budget of the school district. And they need to be listened to as well. And we've got six weeks to figure out how to listen to all of those people and before, you know, thinking about something in November.
Other thoughts? Uh, thoughts from in particular, and, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Michelle.
I, I was just gonna, I, I don't know what this would look like or how, um, because, you know, we, we can't really get out in person. We're not seeing these people in person. And how do we get that information from them? Do we say, hey, e- email us something? I, I'm not, I'm not quite sure how we do that. How, how do we get this information from them? Um, because it's not a matter of, hey, I see you, a quarter second stop and talk and chat.
Right. In, in the business world, it's a multi-channel approach because not everybody communicates the same way. So you, you have to have parallel efforts.
And, and I would suggest that I think we need some new, um, information. And I believe Kevin Dougherty has already mentioned that, and perhaps everybody has, that we are in a different situation right now. In other words, we've all referenced particular groups of people, and there are particular groups that have given us lots of input, and certainly we should be considering it. Groups that have said, you're spending this on this and you shouldn't be. Groups that have said, uh, we'd like to see you do this or that. So that, that can all be considered. But in light of how school was gonna look in the fall, we don't know yet. In light of how the current pandemic and even the current unrest at the moment, how that has affected people, we don't have information on that. We don't have input from those folks about that, how that has affected their lives financially, their lives, uh, with their ability to vote, their lives with what they're thinking about school in the future. So we need to think about how to get that new information as well. Um, perhaps I would ask the board to maybe nod their heads. Is the board comfortable, the, the board as a five-member group, asking the Finance Committee, which happens to be our two newly appointed members, it sounds like we're saying, huh, you're the new guys, you get all the work. But, um, it, is the board comfortable with that Finance Committee, uh, meeting with Mr. Hawley and Dr. Kraus and making a plan and short of doing something that's way on one, one side of the issue or way on the other side of the issue, um, making a plan as to how they will get this information and proceed with being able to uh, come with some recommendations to the board within the next six weeks, say, is, is that... And I would ask Mr. Hawley and Dr. Kraus if they are, um, able to work with the Finance Committee in this sort of way that we have just outlined. Don't everybody say yes or no at once?
I, I mean, I'm, I'm completely fine with that. I just have concerns of all the other pieces, um, you know, the surveys and reaching the community and reaching all the different, um, groups and just getting all of that input, like how that happens, what that looks like, and how do we do it quickly? I just wanna make sure that that doesn't get forgotten about and left out. But I certainly think that Kevin's proposal on plan is much needed and I support that through the Bynett Committee.
I, I see nods. Can I, can I hear from, in particular, Mr. Hawley, who's, who is a crucial member of the Finance Committee and a crucial member of any levy decisions that are made?
Yeah, I was gonna try to say something funny, and he said, willing to work with Eric and Kevin, but, um, I agree. Uh, yeah, I mean, whatever is needed of me. I mean, this is obviously a very important task. It's, it's incredibly important. I mean, I'm ex- honestly, maybe this is a weird part about me, but it, like, excites me a little bit to try to work through scenarios and, um, try to figure some of this information out. Um, I, I mean, it just doesn't matter logistics. I am out of town next week, so that does take out one of, one of the weeks. Um, I'm really looking forward to it. Uh, but... But, you know, if there's any scenarios or any information that I can provide prior to that, you know, just talking, obviously, a piece to what Kevin was saying on the expense side. You know, I'm not necessarily the person that would determine where those cuts would come from. But if there are some expense reductions that you would like us to at least model, we can see what they come out to be and how they help the future impact of the forecast. Yeah, so, yeah, I mean, I, we're, I'm more than willing and looking forward to meeting with Kevin and Eric to, to, to work through this. Just not next week.
Not next week.
We can do meetings when you're on the meeting.
I would say that if,
Internet access there.
If, if these meetings are able to be public meetings, obviously, the other three board members can be audience members. They, they simply can't participate in the meeting because that would constitute a called board meeting as opposed to a called Finance Committee meeting. But if they are public and able to be viewed, anyone can view, any, any school administrator, any school teacher, any, any community member. So there would not be a need necessarily to, there would not be a possibility to run things by other board members. But there would be a possibility for board members to hear how this was progressing.
Well, and, and as in addition to that, our ability to advertise and let people know that this is occurring and then our willingness to accept, hear, understand and incorporate feedback from those observers is very important in this process.
You know, Eric, to that point, this touches on an issue that I, I think we still, still need to get to tonight. But Loveland Magazine says that they get about 600 views of the video that we don't publish, but they copy and, and I guess publish. And, you know, tonight, we have about 60, 50 or 60 observers. Last week, I think we had maybe 100 or so. If you, if you add the, the two of those together, we're getting to something in the neighborhood of 10% of this, of the public that voted in the, in the election. And, and a media strategy that, that gets to 10% of is pretty good. So we, we might use, I, I think YouTube has kind of snuck up on, on, on being maybe, I don't know if this were a fact, but I might argue maybe more influential than Facebook or Twitter. It might have better reach because of its ability to connect with people, et cetera. Its content, et cetera. But in any event, there, there may be some things that we can do that open up those channels relatively quickly. And to the point of Kevin being out of town and not able to participate next week, okay, so we do something else next week. Maybe this is the issue that we focus on next week.
I was thinking that Amy could start a Twitter channel.
That was fast.
With all things aside, it'd be wonderful if we had a budget to include somebody who could focus on those things. And unfortunately, we're trying to cut our budget right now. So we are a little bit hamstrung, you know. I want to spend time and effort and energy getting our message out, but I don't want to spend money getting the message out, you know. And that's, that's simplifying things too much. It's still very important for us to get this message out.
Let me ask a couple of questions. Does the Finance Committee need any other direction from the board in order to proceed with some of this work? And the other question I have, which is perhaps more important, Mr. Hawley, is there other information? We sort of moved from talking about scenarios to talking about how we're going to proceed. Is there other financial information that this whole board needs to talk about or consider or ask questions about this evening before this Finance Committee work can proceed? So two questions there. Does the Finance Committee feel that they are prepared to proceed with some work? And does the Treasurer feel that he has heard what he needed the board to discuss this evening to move forward with work? Or are there other financial pieces we need to talk about?
I mean, I can, I can answer the latter first, just to, to get that one. So I don't necessarily have anything else at this point in time. The intention was to provide data and information. I would say more or less to get the ball rolling and to spark some thought into this process, what we're really looking at, what are the challenges. The only other piece, just going back to the original business people, I'm sure, I, I, I'm a strategist, I like to think about strategy, I'm, I'm a big planner. And so I like to have a lot of data. And one piece of data is, I, I briefly mentioned at the beginning is, each mill roughly is about $950,000. So if you think about scenarios, if you think about decreasing expenses, kind of think of it in, in, in a ratio to that. So that's the easy, easy way to think about it. But no, from my standpoint, I would say, for me, is more, what information does the board need to keep walking through this and making evaluative steps? I know that we're talking about the Finance Committee being an integral part of this. So maybe that's more, and this would be up to Kevin, Eric, or the board in general was, maybe that's a conversation between us. I just, just the understanding of being out next week, I want to make sure that I'm able to give any scenarios that are, that are, that are definitely needed to start walking through that process or as people are just trying to, just think about it.
If, if I can ask Mr. Hawley a question. The $950,000 mill figure. We are relatively sure that that will be correct for a November levy? Is there any doubt in our mind that that number could change for a May levy? In other words, are we talking about any possible change in valuation? We, we don't have any kind of update that would change the financial situation, the financial ability of our community to pay what could be equivalent to $950,000 per mill?
Yeah, that's a great question. So it would not change at all for the November levy because those are values from 2018. So the values that are utilized in levies are based on the previous year's amount. The thing to be aware of is that this is a reappraisal and triennial update in Claremont and Hamilton County. The simple statement there is, your homes are being appraised right now if you live in those two. They basically do it every three years. So if you live in those two counties, 2020 is the year that they do it. So 2021, if there is a levy, it will be based on 2020's value. I know that there's a lot of economic uncertainty. People could correct me if they don't believe this to be accurate, but I don't believe there are going to be decreases in home values, if not significant increases. A lot of that valuation is done earlier in the year. I've, I've spoken with an individual that we work with very closely, who used to work at the Department of Taxation. A lot of, a lot of that data is already gathered and is already, either has been sifted through or is being sifted through. Districts like Loveland as well tend to be far more insulated from some of those challenges as, as other districts are. I'm not necessarily speaking to people's income or anything like that. It's just, it's a function of home values, home sales, and, and those kind of particulars. I'm sure we've all seen that home values have, the sales have increased around here. So my, my expectation and what we forecasted in is, is an increase in values for next year. But that is, so when we're looking at the forecast, you know, there are assumptions in there. And that is one of the assumptions that is currently in the forecast, is an increased valuation for next year.
Thank you. Maybe I'll ask Eric and Kevin Doughty the answer to the first question. Does the Finance Committee feel that they have enough approval or a recommendation from the board to move forward with some work?
I feel comfortable with that. And I have another question for Kevin Hawley. But Kevin, why don't I let you answer first?
Yeah, I, I agree. I, I, I don't feel, I, I think the board has done a great job of adding perspective to the way I was thinking about this. So I, I just think there's a bunch of unknowns and we've got to get to down the dirty business of filling in the blanks.
Okay, thanks. Eric, your question.
Kevin Hawley, this, and I apologize for using my ignorance to waste everybody else's time. But I know that the vast majority of our, of our property taxes come from residential. There's a small chunk of commercial, I assume. Do we have any idea how, how that's assessed? Are any of those tax abated? Does the school get, get that money coming in even on new development? Do you have any, what has the city of Loveland done? And how has that affected our budget?
Yeah, that's a great question. So, so we're about 8%. Our total valuation, our taxable valuation is 8% commercial. So just a little bit of background, just so everybody hears in, in those at home here as well, we're, we're 92.8 residential versus commercial. That's very high. There's not many districts in the area, and I believe actually at this point, only two. I know Wyoming has a higher residential to commercial, and I don't recall the other one. But basically, southwest Ohio are one of the highest residential tax communities, valuation communities. And that is, that is a challenge from a school district perspective because tax increases affect homeowners far more than they do in other districts. When you're looking at commercial property, since we are in, we have to look at not necessarily just the city of Loveland, we have to look at the townships as well. In Sims Township, there are currently are not any TIF properties. TIF is a tax abatement. There's different types of tax abatements. It's called a TIF or a CRA. So in Sims, there's, they're currently not. There have been in the past, but currently are not any TIF properties. On the Claremont, Claremont side, there are. But their TIFs are typically what they would call hold harmless. So we do not receive that money through property taxes. And it's not a part of our total taxable value. We receive that money directly from Miami Township. So they send us a check. So when you actually look at our forecast, it does not show up in the property line, the property tax line, and it actually falls under the other side. So it falls in at the bottom. So that's actually important to you to understand when you look at our district versus other districts. If they have a far larger other revenue, it's typically tax abatements. Within the city of Loveland, the largest tax abatement, there is a downtown TIF. And then there's also a CRA in the, in the city of Loveland. So CRA, right now, they changed the bylaws, I believe, two years ago, if it wasn't last year, where it's only going to be commercial properties. So there are properties within the city of Loveland that we do not receive taxes on. And then depending on, there's three criteria as to how long their tax abatement is from the city. And it can be up to 15 years. After the second year, we are able to send invoices to those properties. But it's 15% of what we would typically receive. So if it's a 15-year tax abatement, we're receiving 15% of what we should receive for basically 13 years of the debt.
That's a great, great explanation. And then go back and again, I have no idea of the politics of the situation. In many school districts, they fought very hard to avoid a decrease in tax revenue based on city agreements like that. Were we ever part of the table for that? Were we ever asked our opinion? Or did Loveland just do it and tell us this is how it's going to be?
That's a good question.
And granted, we're 92.8, so it's a very small portion, but it's still a portion.
Yeah, so that's a great question. So depending on the tax abatement, I'm just talking a bit gen, I'm just talking in generalities at this point. Depending on the tax abatement, they do not necessarily have to come to the school district to have it passed for a resolution. When we're talking about the CRA, the CRA is different. And I might get the year wrong on this, but it's, it's a pre-1980 CRA. So pre, pre that date CRA means that the city has control over what those bylaws are. And so it's a, they can determine whether or not it's 100% of a tax abatement or not. The difference is that if they change the bylaws and amend it twice, it becomes a post, which means that we potentially would have the opportunity to vote on or change parts of that. It's only been changed once, and it was changed just a couple of years ago to match with, the previous administration had some conversations with the city concerning the CRA. There was some confusion based on the language. So there was an update. But at this point in time, they have basically control over those. So we don't, when people, I, I have heard people say to me, why did you not vote on that tax abatement? We do not have the ability to vote against a tax abatement within the current CRA.
And is the, is the city administration amenable to our challenges? Or are they focused on their challenges and so we fall by the wayside?
I mean, so I would say that some of those conversations have been prior to me. They were, they were willing to make some changes within the bylaws. So that's when they changed it from residential to only commercial. So it used to be, so there is currently a property that is residential that is actually under the CRA. So that has become purely commercial. And there was, there was some confusion as to, are we able to bill after two years or three years? And they changed the bylaws to allow us to be able to bill after two years. I can't speak to what the city will or will not do. Obviously, if they make one more resolution or change it, then they do lose control over the CRA.
Okay, thanks. I just wanted to make sure I understood where that fits in. And if, one thing that I'm going to ask you later, I think, is do you give me an idea if things were different and that property was brought into the fold of the properties that support the school district? What kind of revenue would we be looking at?
Sure. Yeah, I can, I can do that research. I don't have it off the top of my head, but I could learn it.
All right. And not that we have the ability to make them do anything, but it never hurts to have the conversation.
Sure.
A copy of our agreed-upon CRA with the city can be found on our August 21st, 2018 minutes. I just searched the minutes and you can see it there.
You were amazing at that.
August 21st, 2018.
All right, so are we, I will ask at this point, are we at the end of the discussion on financial planning and levy scenarios? Dr. Kraus?
A question. One, Eileen and Eric, do you want to have this conversation at all tomorrow night with the Planning Commission? So as a, as a reminder, we had an organizational meeting because it's an inaugural charter year for the commission. But tomorrow night, after I get it started and we run the election and there is a president, I'm out. So I'll give them the, the agenda and they'll facilitate that. And I don't have, obviously, this wasn't on the agenda. But would you like me to add this? Do you want to talk about this at Planning Commission tomorrow night? As a question to the board? Because I, because I will be facilitating the meeting.
I mean, I, my opinion is yes, to at least start to get input from different members of the community in addition to talking about that communication piece, of starting a conversation with many groups and how we actually hear them and respond in the appropriate way, different than we've done in the past.
So if I add that to the agenda, are you guys comfortable speaking on behalf of the board to bring that forward to the commission?
Yes.
Okay, done.
And, and I would just suggest that we would need to be careful to make sure that the whole Planning Commission or the whole finance group of the Planning Commission does not feel that they are invited to be part of specific meetings, since I think that would make the group unworkable in that way for this particular thing. Certainly, I think that this kind of question is exactly what we are hoping the Planning Commission will help us with. It's just how that It's just how that, as Eileen said, it's to get information, it's to get communication, it's to open up and have people know what's going on and get their input as to what's going on. I would hate for them to feel that they have been commissioned as a committee and then wonder why they haven't been invited to any meetings, kind of thing.
Well, and as a side, we're all working through this, which I guess is the point of a work meeting. But for Kevin, Doherty, the, would the inclusion of a planning commission's four or five members in your vision of what a sub, a subgroup of the, or the finance committee meeting be helpful? And from Kathy's standpoint, is that even feasible?
Well, from my, my perspective, yes, it would be helpful. I, I think to point that was made earlier, I, I don't know who the folks on the planning commission are. I know the name, or at least I see the names. But there are some voices in the community that we have to make sure we get, we get into this. So that would be the only caveat that I would maybe put on it.
That's what I was willing to comment as well, that I do like the idea of pulling at least two people from the planning commission, so they can bring that information forward. But I worry that maybe there isn't quite the diversity that we're looking for to pull from, for that, from that group to really get what you're looking for, Kevin, and what we're looking for as a whole.
I'll have to link it up to you guys to, you know.
I'm sorry, Kevin. Now Kathy, the, what, what's your thought on if we're doing this under the auspices of meetings for the finance committee, and we're doing Zoom virtual meetings, how feasible is it to bring, you know, community members into those meetings?
Are you talking about technology, or are you talking about, it, I, I mean, I think that is my point, that what we are saying as a board is we want as much communication and as much input as we can get. The, the rub comes when you say you're getting input from the community in general, or are you forming a committee to, to sort of formalize that input? And so that to me is what the finance committee needs to be careful here, to get as much input as they can from as many people and not limit it to this group of five people who are the committee. It's, it's fine however you work out this working group, but make sure they understand they are not the only people that input is being sought from. They are not the, the arbiters. This is, this is input that's coming back to the board that's gonna make this decision.
Well, and then Eileen, for our planning purposes tomorrow, I think that we need to figure out how to at least offer the planning commission that we're doing this, and we'd like to offer a subgroup of that commission a chance to talk with Kevin and I and Kevin and Amy. And then we need to look for other groups, okay? What other groups are out there? Is there a group of people that represents retired people on fixed incomes? Is there a group that represents parents of the school, whatever that is? And we only have six weeks. Let's hear from as many different voices as possible.
Yeah, I think we need to just utilize all resources and technology and, you know, tap into social media. I mean, we all, I'm sure, have some names in mind of people who are vocal and not afraid to be vocal, that we can then make, have discussion, they need some input, we can reach out, it's within our communities. So I, I think within our planning commission, we're forming our subcommittees tomorrow. Amy has the input for that, so maybe we pull from the finance group subcommittee to meet with you and Kevin potentially. And then for the other piece of it, like I said, reaching out in a wide variety of ways.
I think that's the way to think about it, and I think that Kathy, your point's really good. Just, just asking the finance committee or the planning committee to give us their input isn't a broad enough reach for it to be very helpful for us right now. But asking them and group B and group C and group D, if we have time to get all of that, would be helpful.
Okay.
Great, thanks. Looking forward to it.
Can I, can I say something real fast? I just wanted to go back and just state, I, I said some data incorrectly. So the mileage for this year, when you're looking at expenses, is roughly nine hundred thousand dollars a mile. The assumption for next year was roughly nine hundred fifty thousand dollars a mile, so if you're thinking about it in those words, just so you know.
Thank you.
That makes me feel much better. I thought that I was already losing my numbers.
Thanks, everybody. Okay, so anything else on financial planning or levy scenarios? I think our other discussion item then is the board meetings, where our agenda says we will discuss possible dates for additional meetings and the format of each. Currently, the board is scheduled to meet on June twenty-third and on August eleventh. I know that our last meeting, we promised two things. First of all, to decide if we would continue, and I believe that we indicated we would continue with the Zoom virtual meeting for June twenty-third. I believe we did not say what we would do for August eleventh, but we also promised to discuss how we would have hearing of the public. And so.
Did we, Kevin, did we say for June twenty-third it was gonna be Zoom? I thought we only said for June second it was going to be Zoom, and at the work session, we would be discussing the format for June twenty-third.
I, I don't know if we said for sure. I think in our conversation, what we got was a sense of, we weren't sure how we were gonna open buildings and where we would have it, so it was left that building meetings might be a little problematic. But I, I could be, you could be correct that we didn't say for sure. I got the impression in our conversation that it was going to be difficult to have a building meeting at the end of June somewhere in where we were able to have a meeting, but I, I could be wrong about that.
So we can have a meeting together at any, at any time. The issue would be how you want to make that available to the public. Or because without having any idea of how many people would come, it would be challenging to prepare. I do remember saying I couldn't wrap my head around doing it for tonight, I think, last day. You know, we, because if it's open to the public, we can't say, okay, there's only gonna be ten people, and sorry, you're, you're guest number eleven, and you can't come in. So we can, we can open that up. If, if the public is going to come to observe the meeting, then we just, we do have a concern about, about volume. That, that's gonna complain and feedback from before, and when we do have large numbers of people come, the people in the back aren't able to hear, is the sound still is what the sound is to me? So there's a couple of variables that you can work through.
But the sound hasn't been an issue in the cafeteria and auditorium, correct?
I'm sorry.
And that's a place where we could spread out?
Say it again.
Oh, I said that the sound has not been an issue or concern in the cafeteria and in the auditorium in the past, correct? And that's the place where we could spread out and have however many people show up?
We could do that. We just would have to assign staff to be there to do sound and that sort of thing.
I would think we would also have to assign staff or have helpers there to ensure the distancing as well, so that we're not just gonna be able to open an auditorium and have people come in and, and sit. It, it was just my impression that when we talked about all of the issues for having an in-person meeting with the public with us, June twenty-third, it was gonna be difficult. Our buildings are currently closed. I don't know what we have as far as staff for helping us on June twenty-third. So again, that was the impression I had of all of the challenges of having sort of the meeting we were used to having in person with the public in person.
I mean, I guess my thoughts on it would be if we can't figure out how to have a hearing of the public virtually, then we need to do it in the cafeteria and trust that people are adults and that they're going to socially distance. We could make them each ring a phone signal, may have to stay that far apart. But no, I, I think that people are obviously very sensitive to what's going on right now and are, for the most part, keeping their distance and would be respectful of that. Maybe I'm wrong, but that's my initial gut reaction to it.
I mean, I've been to places where they marked off, I mean, I was at Walgreens today, and, you know, they put dots on the ground where they ask you to stand apart. I had to go take blood the other day, and they put tape on a couple of chairs. But we can create a scenario where we're getting suggested facing.
My, my thoughts on that are we've been getting more audience having Zoom meetings and having them streamed than typically we've been getting in person. And so to add the challenge of changing to in-person for July, I fear would limit who we have. My preference would be to stay online June twenty-third and figure out how to do hearing of the public. That, that's just my preference.
Amy, were you able to get any information or look into that slide-o program or? Okay.
I, um. Well, I saw, I saw Eric's hand first, but he, oh, he just unmuted himself. So how about Eric and then Michelle?
I defer to Michelle.
I was just gonna say personally, I'd prefer not to come into person yet in June. I have reasons, but I'd rather just try to not come together with all those people yet. But if the rest of the board, that's what they wanna do, then I'll have to figure something out.
Well, like I said, I'm completely fine with virtual, if we can figure out how to have, how, how we can hear from the community.
Agreed.
So far, I have only had one request for hearing of the public, but I mentioned to you, I had a request for the May twenty-eighth meeting and responded to that person and said we were still having a virtual, not an in-person, and that they were welcome to provide that hearing of the public. I don't think it should be hard to provide it for hearing of the public under the parameters that we had for our in-person meetings, which was that people were limited to three minutes and we had a half an hour of public participation. So if we had a way that people could send us their, their public participation statement that could be read into the meeting, I, I don't see how that couldn't happen. I think it would be more difficult to bring people into the Zoom meeting to speak personally, but, but I don't know why we couldn't hear statements that are sent into us in some form or another, whether they're in written form that gets placed right onto board docs for the agenda, or whether they're actually read by someone. I don't know what anybody else thinks.
People might actually be more comfortable with sending in something by email versus appearing on video. In fact, there, there will be a percentage of the population that, that might find that to be a better answer.
And I think we would have to ask David, what are the barriers to somebody, to inviting somebody to a Zoom meeting? Have them come in for the, their reading of the public, they pop up, and then they leave the meeting afterwards? Because that, that's feasible to do. I don't know if it's optimal, or if that's even how people would wanna interact with us. But the challenge of adding somebody to a Zoom meeting, having them say what they need to say, and then removing that person from the Zoom meeting, it is not difficult.
I think the biggest difficulty is going to be, since we have had typically more audience members since we've been doing the Zoom meetings, I think it is going to be a little bit more of a challenge to determine which requests for public input fit into the time parameters that we set. Because we've, we've typically taken pieces of paper from people and said, these are the ones, and okay, now you need to stop talking. So it's actually easier to regulate, you know, a one minute, a two minute, a three minute. It's just a matter of where we cut it off. If a hundred come in, we can't read a hundred into the meeting. We could print a hundred and put them in, in board docs, so, you know, it's up to the board.
Kathy, is there, I, I don't know what the legal ramifications of this would be, but is there some way that we could nominate an ombudsman to kind of consolidate messages? I mean, we have fifty, I think fifty people tonight, and I don't know, you know, if we had twenty that wanted to say something, there's the potential for them to be duplicative. And, you know, could we have somebody that consolidates and then articulates the thrust? We have a, what am I thinking of here? We have a stream of questions on this topic. Or we have a stream of comments on, on this topic. And kind of consolidate that? I, I don't know, maybe that's not practical. Just trying to get everybody's voice surfaced somehow.
Right.
Eileen, is slide-o, if I, it says it integrates with Zoom. Can, can people be, can people speak, or is it all written? I'm, I'm doing my investigation on my phone as you speak, and this is hardly a deep dive.
It isn't mine, I'm understanding that it's all written. It would pop up as we're meeting, and we could say, you know, if, and we get a question, type it at this time, or. I, I'm not even sure if it would work for what we're seeking. I'm just, the more we're talking, I'm thinking we're hearing of the public. Even long-term, we need to think about and talk about solutions of having a forum of where people can submit these topics or issues or questions. I know they didn't email us, but even if there's a place like Kevin was talking about that can kind of curate them and have different topics, and then the public can also see what question that they have.
Is the board comfortable? Our, our policy has been suspended for online meetings, and it was, it was permissible to suspend that policy to have public participation. Our in-person meeting public participation was to allow people who requested to speak at the meeting to speak. They could be limited to three minutes, and our time could be limited to thirty minutes. We had within the policy, the ability with the agreement of the board, to go longer than thirty minutes, but we tried to accommodate everyone. I don't believe that we have many instances where we had either to go over the thirty minutes or had problems with too many people wanting to speak. So we're not following the policy. Whatever we do for the June twenty-third meeting, we don't have a policy that covers it. If the board is comfortable with requests coming in written via email to me, and they must have a name with them, because I don't answer anonymous emails, and I don't believe that the board should entertain hearing of the public if we don't have a name for the public person to be heard. But if they come in with a name, is the board comfortable with me either providing them all in a written form, it would be in board docs, or curating them and providing a resume and having that written form available? If the board says, your curated resume is not enough, we wanna hear the whole thing or see the whole thing. Is, are you comfortable working that way for June twenty-third? That requests for hearing of the public would come to me, and I would either make them available in their entirety to all of you, or curate them, or both?
Matt? Kind of building off of that, I guess my suggestion would be, and I'd like to hear what other board members think, would be that we give them the option, because there is a waiting room option in Zoom where Mr. Math could ask them, and when it's their turn to speak, and kind of kick them out when they're done. Give them the option of having it read by you or joining the meeting for their three minutes, wherever they end up being to speak. What other think about that, or do you have a strong opinion one way or the other?
I, I'm very comfortable that the, the, the challenge of, of people participating with us in a Zoom meeting moderated by Mr. Math is not difficult. I'm also. I'm also cognizant of the fact that people may not be technologically inclined to do that. And offering them the ability to have a hearing of the public through written communication um, in this time seems very reasonable. Um, Kathy, I, I, I wouldn't ask you to have to curate it or explain it or do anything else. You just give us the raw documents and put it up there so that we've been able to look at it too.
I, I don't have a problem with, you know, providing the, the raw documents. My concern about opening the Zoom meeting to have people come in is when do we hear about that? So in other words, do we open the meeting and then just people start raising their hand or sending a message that they wanna get into the meeting, or do they need a reservation to get into the meeting? Um, you know, I, I, it's, in our typical meeting, we ask people to fill out a piece of paper. So we know how many people we have. Um, I don't think we can simply start a Zoom meeting and then wait and see who pops up and let them in and let them out and be able to um, in any way, regulate the time of, of the number of people. I know that Mr. Knapp could let them in and kick them out, even if they're not done speaking. It's a matter of how many people could be accepted that way? And do they have to know that they have to be ready to come into the Zoom meeting at 6:15 and be done by 6:45? And what if somebody tries to ask to get in at 6:50? And do, do you see what I'm saying? Just the logistics of it.
Yeah, I just, I think if that's the route we do decide to go, I hear what you're saying. I think that with technological advances and thinking about the way that um, specifically at the middle school that they set up conferences where there are different time slots that people sign up for ahead of time. And is that what you're saying, what if they know about it or whatnot? And I mean, that's certainly an issue.
So this is a case, I'm, I'm know what I don't know, a little bit of a, of a problem, but I, 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 there's a part of me that thinks that um, written submissions might be more efficient, uh, at least in the first step, um, in giving voice to more uh, members of, of the community uh, than, you know, kind of reserving a, a slot initially anyway and, and having them make statements. Uh, now again, I don't know what I, what I don't know here. Uh, maybe there's, maybe there's only five people that, that, that wanna say something and thirty minutes is a ton of time. I, I, I don't know, but I'm just so anxious to, to give a pathway to the community to express what's on their mind. Uh, kind of the more the better, uh, until we've satisfied the, the, the need that's out there. Just opinions, I don't really know. Um, I, I think though, one step at a time might be a good strategy. Um, not trying to, you know, we could start with written and move to video uh, as we get more experience of this online space.
Well, especially since we don't know if June 23rd is our final online meeting as far as a regular business meeting. In other words, if we're going to have our August 11th meeting be a typical meeting and have people in person, um, then we've gone to a lot of trouble to figure out how to do one thing one way and we're gonna do it a different way in the next one. So I agree, maybe starting with one step and perhaps we get public input that says, we don't like this written email thing. You need to let us speak and then we figure out how to do that.
Right.
From a communication standpoint, we have, um, since we've gone online, uh, we post the link to how to watch this live stream on that board up page. And, and then, you know, you push that out and communicate that out. There isn't in my mind any reason why a line explaining, you know, to participate in help, in hearing of the public. You can email your words, your, you know, whatever, whatever words you wanna use. We can add that to that. So people are already looking for the live stream, we're already communicating the live stream. To me, there isn't any reason we can't also communicate how they could, how they can do whatever it is that you um, are, you know, going to describe or which to have. So if it's an email, if it's words and understanding, you know, clearly understand that the intent would be for those two words to be read. Um, you know, during the hearing of public. And if you wanna limit that so that reading it is under three minutes, or if you wanna use those same rules, we get that, that's up to the board. But from a communication standpoint of how would people know? I feel like, you know, clearly people are getting the link because people are watching it. So at least that's a fair avenue for explaining to people how they might submit their words to the board.
And that, that goes out a couple of days before the meeting, correct? So it's not going out the day of the meeting?
Uh, as soon as we have a live stream link, we put it on our website. So um, I mean, that's, we do that well before, I mean, the, the agenda goes live at least twenty-four, or at least forty-eight hours before the meeting and um, but I mean, those, that expectation did go up. I mean, if I understood the words, you could put the expectation up tomorrow.
Okay.
That sounds great to me.
Alright, so that's for June 23rd, that we're going to continue with a Zoom meeting for June 23rd and we're going to add hearing of the public to that meeting. Um, I, I am suspecting so that we can finish this meeting before midnight tonight, we're not gonna talk about the format of the August 11th meeting.
Can I ask one certification, Dr. Lorenz, before you move on?
Yes.
Do you want any, um, do you want, hearing of the public discipline needs? Send, send your words to have read at the board meeting to the presidential board at this email, Dr. Lorenz? Do you wanna put a limit on that from a time perspective? Do you wanna add any abnormal words on that? Is there, or is that unacceptable to submit to Dr. Lorenz?
I can hear from the others if they disagree with what I'm saying. I would suggest that it say there will be a hearing of the public. Members of the public can send us a written, um, a written presentation which will be entered into the board documents, the board docs in its entirety. They could also request that their um, their public participation be read. If that is so, it must adhere to the under three minutes to be read allowed into the meeting. And there would be a half an hour allotted for that um, total time of reading into the. And I, I mean, my preference would obviously be that they just send us something written and that's provided to all board members and it's on board docs and then all of our public can see it, all of the board can see it. Um, but if someone wants to request that it be read, it's going to have to be time limited.
Kathy, would it be first come, first served in that respect?
I would think so, to be fair.
Would we also, would we also entertain questions?
We have always entertained questions. We have not always been able to enter into discussion about those questions. So if someone comes with a question and says, when is your next meeting and can I be heard? Obviously, there's an answer to that. If someone comes with a question of, when are you having the next levy? The answer would be the board has not discussed that or resolved that yet and the answer will come in our next meeting. So yes, they can, they can ask questions. Um, it is a question of how those questions can be answered at the particular meeting. And I can curate the, the written things that come in to go, give a list of questions that have been asked in there too. So the board can deal with those in an audible kind of way as opposed to just a written way. Amy, did that answer your question for?
Yes, is the board comfortable if I try to capture what I heard Dr. Lorenz say and that she and I make sure that that's accurate before we post that on the website?
Yes.
Yeah, I would just make sure to include obviously a cutoff point since the meeting will be live as to when you want people to email, email by.
Has to be in by a certain date, yes, thank you.
One step over.
One step. Now, after meetings, we were also supposed to talk, I believe, about meetings if they were necessary in July and prior to August 11th. Is the board comfortable trying to set those meetings tonight? Or comfortable waiting till June 23rd to set them? I, it, it's always best to get them on people's calendars. Um, and is the, is the finance committee asking if, uh, I know Kevin had set in his um, schedule a July 15th date, was that a request for a meeting for July 15th? Or was that a timeframe to finish? Um, and then we, the board would determine if it needs to have a necessity and a proceed meeting?
I would think we would have to have a July 26th meeting so we could hear from the finance committee, correct? Because that would be the day we'd have to pass the resolution of necessity.
It doesn't have to be, it doesn't have to be July 26th. I had seen a, so in other words, we can have all kinds of meetings. We could meet July 15th to discuss the results of this and if we were sure enough at that meeting, pass a resolution to proceed or.
The deadline, right?
July 26th, yes.
July 26th?
One more time?
Well, my point was just that we would have to have something prior to that to know if we were going to pass the resolution or not. Because we'd need the information from the finance committee and talk about the input and feedback from the standing commission and such.
Maybe you had something to say there to it, missed it?
I was just saying the 26th is a Sunday, so I'm not sure.
Yeah, July 26th is not the right date, so.
Okay.
That may not be the date Mr. Hawley said, I just, I, I pulled that out of the air.
It is, it is the day, it's a hundred days before the election, so it's, it just happens to fall on Sunday.
So we have to.
So if we have. I'm assuming it would have to be filed on the 24th, correct?
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I would prefer that we probably try to do it a little bit before then. We, we just, we've run up, I guess, some deadlines on the 11th hour here recently.
Kathy, could we um, uh, put a tentative meeting out on, you know, give or take July 15th?
Absolutely.
Reserve the date and if we decide, uh, for whatever set of reasons we don't need it, take it off?
Yes. So in, in my opinion, the board would set a date for the resolution to proceed, or excuse me, the resolution of necessity and a date for the resolution to proceed. And if the finance committee clearly comes up with recommendations to the board that um, there is no need for those meetings, we would wait until our next meeting to discuss because we would have plenty of time in there for the discussion then. Um, so yes, we would set a July meeting perhaps. Uh, it could even be, I don't know, July 21st. Um, is that early enough, Mr. Hawley, for um, for the resolution to, of necessity?
Yes, that would, that would be early enough. I could double check with uh, Hamilton County Auditor. I guess my only question would be, it would, do you feel confident that the board would be able to make a decision and do a resolution on the same day? Like basically with the board not having any opportunity to come back together and have greater discourse or dialogue, um, that's just my only hesitancy on doing.
I, I don't know what difference, to me, I don't know what difference a week would make. In other words, if, if we say, let's have a meeting on the 15th, I, I can't imagine a scenario where we'd say, finance committee, you have to go back and in the next four days, do more work before we decide to proceed. Does that?
I, I was just throwing out there is, do people feel confident with that? And if, if people do, then that's, that's completely fine.
I may be wrong.
I, I, this is hard and it's, it's gonna be hard. Uh, I, I don't know what the next six weeks look a lot, look like. I just know that there is a deadline uh, out there if we're gonna make uh, a move this year. So finding a way to live within that timeframe is part of the challenge here. Um, the, 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 the 2020 date doesn't move. So I, I am, I, I don't know how to do it all, I, I just know it's, something's gotta be done. Either we decide to or we decide against. But by July 21st or 4th or whatever day we settled on, is it? Uh, so I would say, let's put the dates out there. Uh, Kathy, you're looking at the calendar, but you know, give or take July 15th, put that out there. Put July 21st out there and uh, let the group get to work on this and see how effective we can be over the next six weeks.
Yeah, so the only other thing that I would suggest too then, you know, this is just for the pre-planning, not necessarily assuming that there is gonna be a levy occurring, is making sure that individuals are available that following week. If we have to do a resolution to proceed so that we have people available, I'm just making sure that people are available on the 29th, 30th or 31st essentially.
Alright, that's what I was gonna ask because my internet had cut out, so.
Okay, so.
People they for.
Right, we're possibly talking about, let's just pick some days. We're talk, possibly talking about the 15th to meet and that would be for the board to consider what has happened with the finance committee. We then could meet the 21st or the 22nd for a resolution to proceed, or to a resolution of necessity if we weren't sure on the 15th. On the 15th, we could vote for a resolution of necessity, correct?
Yes, yeah, I mean.
But if we set one for the 15th, we set one for the, the 22nd and we set one for the 29th, we could meet all of those things, is that correct?
Yeah, I'm gonna say.
Or would you prefer?
I, I can make this a little bit easy because I'll be out of town the last week of July. It doesn't mean that I can't call in, but I certainly won't be available for a four-hour meeting.
Okay.
Well, I would think the lengthy meeting would be the honor about July 15th. That would be the meeting of discussion. The meetings to pass a resolution of necessity and a resolution to proceed can be as simple as a call to order, vote on the resolution of necessity and vote on the resolution to proceed. There, there could be nothing else in those meetings. It's gonna be the meeting that is the discussion of the results of the finance committee that would be a longer meeting.
I think it's intentional at the end of that meeting that we say, nope, there's no way that we consider this and we can cancel the other meetings or we say, yes, it's clear from that, that we need to move forward. And then like Kathy said, the other meeting will take five or ten minutes.
And we need to have two separate votes, do they need to be separated in time by any particular amounts?
Yeah, so that's where the Hamilton County Auditor comes into play. Uh, they typically like two weeks to accomplish it. They have done it in about four or five days. Uh, we had the last, the November meeting, the November levy, we voted it on a Monday and we voted a resolution of necessity on a Monday, proceed on a Friday. They were able to do that, I just sometimes.
You don't wanna be uncomfortable if you don't have to.
Alright, let's.
Yeah, I mean.
Let's go backwards then, Mr. Hawley. What is the last date that we can pass a resolution to proceed?
Technically, you can go into August on resolution to proceed. You can do it August, by August 5th. So if you go into August.
So August 4th is a Tuesday.
It's my birthday.
So if, if August 4th was going to be our resolution to proceed, then Au, then July 21st could be our resolution of necessity, that's a two, that's two full weeks.
I'm possessed.
And then the fourth will have a week in July.
Correct, I know it sounds like I'm out, I, I'm potentially out that first week of August. Correct. I know it sounds like I'm out. I I'm potentially out that first week of August.
Um.
I mean.
If it's just, oh, so then you can't file it. Um, can your Assistant Treasurer be voted as our Treasurer Pro Tem and take care of that filing if you are out? Or does it have to be signed by the Treasurer?
I don't think it has to be signed by, um.
I mean, I realize you wanna be a part of it, but I I mean, we can back up then. We can, if if it's a resolution to proceed that is on July 28th, I'm hearing Eric say that he could be a part of a virtual meeting that is simply call to order, pass a resolution to proceed. Correct, Eric?
Almost certainly.
I mean, really, I guess, if, I I guess if we're going backwards and we are saying, you know, yeah, I can file it, that's the only issue. I was gonna say, I could be a part of a virtual meeting. My internet's a bit spotty where I go, but.
Okay.
Um, I'm just trying to, yeah.
And the policy aside, uh, our plans are still in flux, and I I would hate to 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 say that I can do something that I can't do, but you know, it sounds like any place that I can get an internet connection, I can get online vote, so I'm actually worried about that.
Okay. Well, that didn't work going backwards. I thought that was gonna make it easy. Um, how about if we set a July 15th meeting?
Yeah, and then.
Or or July 16th meeting, and we leave it open that if at the July 16th meeting, for some reason, we can't pass a resolution to proceed, and we need, or yes, a resolution of necessity, we could call on the 16th a meeting for the 21st or 22nd that would be virtual, just a resolution, and we can call on the 16th or 17th, or a meeting for the 29th that would just be virtual. I'm just picking days there. In other words, let's just pick a July date where we meet to talk about the information that is being gathered by the Finance Committee.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. And then just making sure at this point in time that people are available that week of the 20th.
For a virtual meeting that would be simply a resolution of necessity and a resolution to proceed.
Yes.
And I'm sorry, you said that both of those could be done at the same time?
No, they would, it would be two different meetings, but they both could be done, simple, call to order, pass the resolution, adjourn.
But going back to Kevin's concern, I'm sorry, because I don't know if they can't. In theory, the state of Ohio wanted those two weeks apart.
It's actually a Hamilton County Auditor.
I'm sorry.
It's it's a Hamilton County Auditor that wants to, um, but they they have, they have been able to bend over backwards. They've basically been able to get it back to me in 48 hours.
Okay.
Um, so we, I don't know if we just set up that July 15th date and we just all.
Yeah, let's do, let's do that and go from there.
Yeah.
Okay. Is July 15th okay? It's tax day now, you know.
Yeah. That's the only thing on my calendar.
It was, it was supposed to be April 15th, but now it's July 15th, so it's tax day. Just saying. Okay, so for July 15th, we will set up a meeting, and that will be a regular board meeting. Uh, and the purpose of that meeting will be to discuss financial situation, financial scenarios, and levy possibilities. Okay? Um, and there would not be, or there would be hearing of the public. Do you want hearing of the public same way, written?
Let's leave it at, let's leave it at that for now. I don't think that we have the ability to have any more foresight than we've already had.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say. We either don't see how the next meeting goes, or if we need to adjust the um
Okay.
format, we'll go next time.
All right. Uh, anything else we need to talk about board meetings? We're almost getting in under the three-hour limit here. Not that there's a three-hour limit. Okay, so everybody's clear on what we're doing June 23rd? Kevin, do it.
Uh, I I'm fine with the 23rd. I I'm just uh, just gonna raise the the subject of uh, releasing online videos, and that could be separate.
Um, are you asking to discuss that this evening?
Uh, I don't know for, if if it's getting too late, uh, I'm good, but I I I, you know, it's an issue that's out there, and I wanted to just push on it a little bit.
The the brief, uh, just the brief notion of it is that they are currently, per House Bill 197, videos are created to be streamed at the time of the meeting, and that is the legal requirement. They are not, um, as some people have questioned, deleted. They are recorded and they are kept. They are archived. They are not currently posted on the district website because of the issues we had talking about videotaping and posting non-ADA compliant. And so the question that remains is, um, whether the closed captioning ability of the YouTube is accurate and sufficient for the board, and so I would think that at the June 23rd meeting, it could be a fairly quick discussion of the board. Is it the will of the board to go ahead and post those? Or is it the will of the board to keep with the current process, which is that they have been posted through various media outlets, and that the board is not yet posting them on the website because we haven't yet figured out how to make them, the best way to make them ADA compliant?
Um, Kathy, I I respect your view as the president, and whatever you want to keep on the agenda tonight is totally fine. Whatever you want to discuss later is totally fine, so feel free to cut me off. I would like to see them posted in the interest of transparency, and I believe after exploring it, that closed captioning services that are available to us without ridiculous expense are sufficient to meet the letter of the law. Um, to the point that I'm comfortable proceeding with that. I would have, I would be happy to have that conversation anytime, but if most people are in agreement with me, can we have that conversation tonight if it's fast?
Yeah, I was saying, I think that's happening tonight as well. I mean, it's being put out there anyway, and I don't know, there's all sorts of research out there. There's, because I would have to read more about whether that YouTube is ADA compliant. Um, but as you said, right now, we're allowed to stream it anyway. I I mean, I, I'm not sure what I'm having, but at least.
I I'm sorry, Eileen, your your um, comments broke up for me. I don't know if they broke up for everybody else.
I would like to also have the discussion tonight if other people are agreeable.
Okay. Discussion.
I was just saying, um, that, I mean, it's out there anyway. People are recording it, so I don't see what the real problem is with posting the link on a website or elsewhere, because um, YouTube does have that capability of creating the closed captioning, and I know we've had this discussion before, and it's, it's not perfect. But my opinion is that it's good enough for now, and it's temporary.
Uh, can I just break in for one second? I am going to move away from my video screen. My laptop is running out of battery, so I've gotta go plug it in, or you're gonna lose me. Which may not be a bad thing, but that's okay. So keep talking. I can hear you. You just won't see me for a minute.
I have to shout, go ahead, I'll jump in.
Okay, so if we go ahead and post this, which I'm not opposed to whatsoever, um, we were not hosting our live meetings, so when we go back to live meetings, we we've got that issue because we don't have anything set up to tape our live meetings.
And I think that's something that we need to figure out too, and I know it's something that we had discussion around related to cost. But maybe Kevin and Eric have some new fresh ideas on how to make that happen in a way that either cost-friendly or potentially free.
Cost for, I mean, Suzanne, for, you know, provided several scenarios to the former board, and I've shared these back with the two new board members. Uh, the costs for paying somebody to close caption. And if the board is comfortable with the YouTube version of the closed caption, the costs are, I mean, to figure out how to videotape, uh, the live board meeting is a is a nominal cost. The 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 large costs associated, when we were talking previously, was having somebody read the transcription, transcribe and be accurate, and then check it to make sure that that, I mean, it was just a lot of manpower, and that was the, that was the cost. So, I mean, we can, having somebody videotape the meeting in order for it to be streamed and post-captured as YouTube does it, is not going to be an excessive cost. The costs were around accuracy in closed captioning. When we left off, again, pre-pandemic, that was where our conversation left off.
But I think the issue as far as filming, and we can discuss that later, because it's not what we're talking about now. But the issue for filming would be more in an in-person meeting. What kind of filming are we talking about? Are we talking about a hired videographer who does the job so that the video is at least of the same quality as a Zoom meeting, where everybody can be seen and everybody can be heard? If you have a stationary camera with just a camera set, taking a picture at a board meeting, you don't get the same quality as what you're getting when you see individual people on a Zoom meeting. Um, and you know, if somebody coughs, you don't hear. If somebody in the audience coughs, you don't hear. So, but that's another question for another time. It it totally was for us, the accuracy of the captioning. To me, I mean, we tried to have something transcribed, and I think you all remember, not, not Eric and Kevin won't remember, but the transcription that we tried changed Mr. Portune's name to Mr. Fortune every time. And so, as long as we can put a little key along with our videos that say, um, Dr. Schweitzer now is Eric, um, or you know, however we do it, um, you know, I I will personally probably be very upset with the accuracy of the closed captioning, but that's a personal problem of mine. That's not a problem for the board to worry about.
Well, go ahead, Kevin, sorry.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, the the only other uh, thing that I thought about was uh, um, hiring um, a sign language interpreter um, and seeing if there was a, a way technologically to have that person always visible in a corner of the of the screen. I don't know if Zoom has that capability or not. I did a little bit of research on on the cost, or at least what sign language interpreters earn. I I don't know what they bill out as, uh, but something in the neighborhood of $25 an hour, uh, seems to be the going earnings rate. So it wouldn't be an enormous cost if we were totally dissatisfied with the automated closed captioning to explore an alternative being the interpreter online with us. Uh, but I, the overall thing in my mind is the old saying about perfect is the enemy of good. We are in pursuit of transparency. Uh, it's being, you know, we're we're learning both through um, real-time attendance and through um, Loveland Magazine, uh, post views, that this is a powerful way to facilitate transparency and and start that dialogue. So I I I, you know, I I know it's imperfect, but I am in favor of trying our best to get something out immediately after these meetings.
And and I'll add, Kathy, um, I totally understand your sensitivity and frustration with an inaccurate transcript. I think, I think I have two things that are important. One is, this is a good faith effort to comply with the ADA rules and let us be more transparent rather than less transparent. Meaning not to let the rules keep us from sharing the information that we want to share, but in order to help us reach as many people as we can. And the second part is, as a physician, he uses voice transcription every day while I speak very, very quickly, and the voice transcription is moderately accurate. It does make for frustrating reading of notes later on. So it's, you have to learn to accept mediocrity.
I did also find, um, as guides to making YouTube videos ADA compliant, and there is a way to edit the closed captioning and any subtitles and to save it, so it would be a quick, easy, hopefully upload of, like, say, Eric's last name. So I I'm not subjectively going through every single meeting and change every single word each time, because that's going back to the issue of the time and the money and all of that, but if we have one, like, we know Eric's last name's going to be botched every time, we can set it up.
Well, I'm gonna botch it every single time, so it's okay. Um, but I have two comments. Um, uh, the only reason that videos were not posted, archived, or or, yeah, archived and available on our website from the very beginning was the concern that they be ADA compliant and follow our policy. Not to be just blindly following rules, but because we had legal advice that um, not following your policy as far as ADA compliance is concerned could cause the district problems. So that's the only reason there, not because of my, the boo about, um, accurate. I know you didn't mean that. The only other comment I have is, it the, it it sounds like the board is in favor of having these archived. I want us to be careful that we don't believe that this is a very big step in our communication problem, because I don't believe that it is. I believe that our communication problem is a much different issue than whether our meetings are accessible. I've been with board meetings long enough in my life to know that I've had lots and lots of meetings where nobody came. I've had lots and lots of meetings where a handful of people came. I've had maybe a handful of meetings where a hundred people came, um, and they tended to be singular issues, and they're not necessarily the tool to do communicating what this board needs to communicate. So, just so we don't feel like, okay, we posted our meetings on the website, and now we're done. I I think that's not, that's not, um, we need, we have a bigger communication problem, and we need to figure out how to fix it.
I agree with you.
Probably, yeah.
I would emphasize what we're doing is, you know, kind of laying the next stone in a cobblestone path forward. There's gonna be a lot of different elements to solving these things.
And I agree with Eric, baby steps, but just so it's not baby talk. Sorry, I lost it.
Wait till you see Swechernow being closed captioned.
Oh, I can't wait for that. Um, okay, so, so now are we good on discussing meetings?
I just want to.
That was Eric, that was a ten-minute discussion.
To clarify, what is the will of the board for meetings then? Do you wish these to be, to remain live? Do you, do you wish that to start with tonight's meeting? Do you wish us to, we can make the board meetings live? They are all YouTube closed captions.
I I.
Great.
Put all of them out there, the ones that we have, if we have that ability. I mean, starting with, um, when we started the Zoom meeting, correct, is when are we saying started tonight?
Yes, I'm I'm asking for clarification.
I know, I was asking others.
Well, I'm okay with starting tonight. That, well, you know, we just decided this now. I'm okay if we think we can go back and and label over what we have, that's fine with me too.
The labeling over what we have is what, is time-consuming. It's like, if we're okay with YouTube worthy, then it's easy. If you want us to edit and transcribe, it's time-consuming.
No.
I'm fine with YouTube closed captioning, starting tonight, because other people.
Mine's, yes, you would, yeah, go ahead.
Oh, I was going to say, now that Dr. Wang has made it clear that those aren't deleted, if somebody really wants or needs it, they can request it past leading, correct? And then if we have time, I'm just trying to think of all the planning we have to do between now and our next meeting. I don't wanna bog anybody down at Central Office who can be doing potential work towards that. I don't wanna bog anybody down at Central Office who can be doing potential work towards that.
If I heard Amy correctly, then what I heard you say, Amy, was it is not difficult to turn on that feature of YouTube. The only challenge is we have no idea what it will actually look like.
Right. Wait. And we can watch it.
Why don't, why don't we start with tonight?
I agree.
Why don't we start with tonight and everybody gets to watch it? And then on June 23rd, we'll make a decision, do we want to go ahead and put all the other ones up that we have or just continue from tonight on?
Sounds great.
Sounds good.
Okay. All right. Now for a 12-minute discussion. Anymore?
You're plugged in, you're stuck with us tonight.
Yes, I am. I'm about half battery back again, so. Okay, is there any other business that the board needs to discuss? If not, then we need to move to the agenda item, which is to, I need a resolution to approve the May 28th, 2020 Board of Education minutes. Is there motion?
May.
Mrs. Washburn, and then I saw Miss Pettit as a second. So those minutes are on board docs, and those are the ones that we would be approving tonight. Are there any questions or suggestions or amendments to those minutes?
No.
Seeing none, could we vote on that, Mr. Hawley?
Ms. Pettit? Dr. Swetchnow?
Yes.
Mrs. Washburn?
Yes.
Mr. Doherty?
Yes.
Dr. Lorenz?
Yes. Motion carried. There being no other business on the agenda, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. And then, Ms. Pettit, she likes to do that, and I see Dr. Swetchnow seconded. So we have a motion and a second to adjourn. Mr. Hawley, can we vote on that?
Dr. Swetchnow?
Yes.
Ms. Washburn?
Yes.
Mr. Doherty?
Yes.
Dr. Lorenz?
Yes.
Ms. Pettit?
Yes.
Motion carried. I have this meeting adjourned at 9:13. Thank you all. And we'll see you July 15th.
No.
June 23rd, sorry. Sorry about that.
I owe you 13 minutes back, Kathy.
Okay. Thanks. Good night, everyone.
Good night. Yeah.